Okay. Good evening, everybody. Today is Thursday, May 7th, 2020. It's 7:21. I am calling this school committee meeting to order pursuant to the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's Emergency Order dated March 16th, 2020. The Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the HCAT webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak through the meeting. At this time, I will do a roll call. Attendants? Ms. Henshaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Present.
Mrs. Raffey? Present. I will now accept a motion to remotely participate during this meeting this evening.
Moved by Dawn Naborski?
Seconded by Lisa. Moved by Dawn, seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? Ms. Henshaw?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes. Great. Thank you all. Meeting minutes from April 16th, Executive Session. Does anybody have any questions or changes that they want to see made? No looking? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the April 16th, 2020 Executive Session Minutes for which we will retain?
Moved by Dawn.
Seconded by Joan.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Joan. Sorry, Joan. All in favor? Roll call vote. Ms. Henshaw? Yes. Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes. April 23rd, our special session. Any questions or comments?
You're underwater again, Stace.
I'm underwater. I think it's just my internet connection. Sorry. April 23rd, meeting finished. Is there a motion to approve April 23rd, 2020?
Moved by Dawn. Moved by Dawn.
Seconded by Joan. Moved by Dawn, seconded by Joan. Roll call, all in favor? Ms. Henshaw?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes. Excellent. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move right along with this agenda this evening.
Excuse me, Ms. Raffey.
Oh, yes.
There was also on the agenda was the approval of the April 16th, 2020 Regular Session Minutes.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. Yep. Any questions, comments for April 16th Regular Session? Nope? Is there a motion to approve our Regular Session, April 16th, 2020 Meeting Minutes?
Moved by Cynthia.
Seconded by Dawn.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Dawn. All in favor? Ms. Henshaw?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Brad. Okay. Mary, it is nice to see you, our student. Do you have any, anything to share this evening?
Yes, I do. I'd like to talk about two things really quickly, or one thing really quickly, and then something else. I'd like to thank the parents, the friends of Class of 2020, the Holliston PTO, and Michelle Hastings for organizing lawn signs for all the members of the Class of 2020. It was very thoughtful of them. Nice gesture for them to support us as we near the end of our senior year. And the other thing I would like to talk about is graduation because Anya is not able to participate tonight. We wrote a letter earlier today that we wanted to share. We also shared this with Nicole Bottomly, her Mrs. Bottomly, our principal, because we know she's making the final decision regarding graduation. So we just wanted to share that the Student Advisory Council has always served to represent the opinion and experiences of the student body, and as seniors ourselves, want to further express this opinion on the matter of graduation. We feel it's important to treat graduation as a meaningful and memorable experience, marking one of the biggest achievements in most of the members of the Class of 2020's lives thus far. We do not want it to be seen as another box to check off on a to-do list. The seniors this spring have had to grapple with the loss of many traditions that they've been looking forward to for years, with graduation being the culmination of our time at the Holliston Public Schools. When we received the email regarding the two options for graduation, we appreciated the creativity of the June 7th virtual drive-by graduation. However, the impression many students and parents received from the email was that an in-person celebration on July 25th was being treated as a less achievable goal. We'd like to advocate for the possibility of an in-person graduation ceremony despite the later date of July 25th. We understand that graduation this year will not be the same as in its years past, but it's our goal to make it as traditional as possible. Graduation serves as an important component of celebrating the culmination of our 13 years as students of the Holliston Public School System. The Class of 2020 has spent the majority of our lives together, rooting each other on in all of our endeavors in being there to support one another when challenges arise. We see graduation as our final event to celebrate alongside each other before we all part ways for our next adventures. It seems that this excitement and meaning would be taken away with the virtualless drive-by option. We greatly value the togetherness of our class. It has also been brought to our attention that many members of our class have said they would not participate in a virtual or drive-by graduation. We wanted to share this information because we believe our graduation should be an event in which all students are excited to participate in. We appreciate the consideration that is being taken to ensure all students would be able to attend the graduation celebration on July 25th, should we proceed with that option. And we hope that attendance at any other celebration will be taken into consideration as well. We understand that there is still the possibility that restrictions will not have been lifted enough to allow for a traditional graduation and are in support of whatever will be the safest option. However, we believe even if a virtual drive-by graduation is held on the 7th, the possibility of an in-person graduation on the 25th should still be considered. With all that is being lost this spring and the manner in which we left Holliston High School, we know that the graduating class would appreciate an effort on behalf of this school to help celebrate our seniors. And we just want to thank her again for all the work that her, our class officers, and her class parents have done so far, and we just want to really help in any decision that is going to be made.
Thank you, Mary. And it's really good to see your smiling face tonight. We haven't seen you in a little bit, so thank you very much for that. And please tell Anya we say hello, and we are sending her good wishes for her exam tonight.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay. Individual School Committee comment? Does anybody have comment tonight? Lisa, Joan? I don't see your faces or anything. And Louise?
I'm sure we'll talk more later. I did want to reiterate the thanks to, I'm not going to say her last name, Mara Marzuski of the PTO, Michelle.
Marcheski.
Marcheski. I knew I just screwed that up. And Michelle Hastings for the extraordinary effort she put into those signs. She not only designed them, she helped Hillary Freely, the other Class of 2020 Parent Representative and I, with all the organization and distribution lists. And it was really important to us that those signs went out in a matter of two hours so that every senior saw one when they woke up the following morning. And Mara, between Mara and the others, we were able to corral about 20 or so parents who stepped up to get out in town and plant the signs. Many of them were senior parents, but many of them weren't. I know Stacy, you did this as well. I'm not sure who else here, if anyone did, but I really want to thank all of you because it was a small gesture, but it meant a lot to the seniors just to see that, as you could hear from Mary. And Michelle did this on top of trying to teach remote classes and print face shields and everything else, so that was exceptional. I just also want to reiterate that this graduation question is a big one. I'm very proud of you as students. I know the class officers have been working very hard. And Mary, I'm so glad that you and Anya and the Student Council were able to convene as well, because I think it should be something that represents the broader input of the student body to the degree that your wishes can be accommodated. So I'm very proud of you standing up there, so thank you. And you're not my Mary.
Thank you, Ann Louise. Yes, the other non-graduating senior parents were Carla Alfred, Shannon Cornwell, Sarah Fitzgerald, and myself. And it was our pleasure, and it is something in the books that I will always remember for many reasons. One, being walking around in the dark with a face mask on, trotting along people's yards. And I took my son with me, so we, it was interesting, but it was my pleasure and the rest of the PTO absolutely. And we are so proud of you, and we are thinking of you because this is, this is an extraordinary time, so. Dawn, I think you had your hand up?
Very briefly, I also just wanted to echo the thanks to the parents who have coordinated those signs, and also to say, great job, Mary. That was really, you articulately advocated on behalf of the graduating class, and thank you very much for doing that tonight.
Okay. And we will move right on to our administrative team. Brad?
Thank you, Mary. Congratulations, and I know this is a difficult time for you and your classmates, and I know everyone's heart is breaking for how our seniors' senior year has been changed in such a significant and, in fact, awful way. And I think there isn't a person in this virtual room who wishes that they weren't in the Holliston High School library right now to, and prepare additional graduations. So hang in there. I know it's been a difficult road for you and your classmates, and we care about you and are very, and frankly, wish that we had some, you know, we wish this weren't happening to you or to your classmates. On another subject, similar to the high school, I did want to inform the committee and the community that I did submit the statement of interest for Holliston High School to the Massachusetts School Building Authority this week prior to the deadline, and will be forwarding a hard copy of that on Tuesday after I receive certified minutes from the Board of Selectmen on their vote. And finally, I'd just like to, I don't think this meeting should go by without a mention of Teacher Appreciation Week and also Nurses Appreciation Day, which took place yesterday. While everyone is in the middle of extraordinary circumstances, our teachers are certainly finding themselves there as well. And I have found with virtually, with no exceptions, that these teachers have stepped up to the plate and are juggling things that I can, as a person who is only at home with myself and my wife, I can only imagine the juggling that has to take place by our teachers who have youngsters at home who have children they have to manage their remote learning for. So I just wanted to, from the bottom of my heart, thank the teachers of Holliston for the extraordinary efforts they have put in in implementing this remote learning program. We went from, on March 12th, we had school, and at 7:30, at 7:30 at night, Peter and I were in my office, and we made the decision to cancel school for six days. And at that point in time, that was a controversial decision because we didn't know if it should have been one or two weeks. And now here we are, May 7th, faced with closure for the rest of the school year. And our teachers have responded time after time after time, and I am so grateful for that and so appreciative. They are professionals through and through. Those are my comments for tonight.
I'd like to give them a standing ovation. I know this is weird because we're home, but thank you, teachers. It is absolutely imperative that you understand that we absolutely appreciate you, especially on this. Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, I think Brad captured most of it. I just want to commend students and administrators for their teamwork and effort throughout this process, but especially the teachers, the creativity and the collaboration and the effort and just desire to do the best they could for kids during this difficult time has been extraordinary. And the stories that, you know, I continue to witness have been, just made me really proud to witness. So again, thank you to the teachers. We appreciate you greatly, and we'll talk a little bit more about some of the work they're doing in the COVID-19 closure update later.
Keith, did you have anything?
Well, as long as we're talking about a lot of things related to what we've gone on through COVID, I just want to just also commend our maintenance staff, custodial, our cleaners, cafeteria people, our singular bus driver, who are all working every day here, just like it's a normal day in some way, shape, or form. And, you know, again, keeping us available for whatever happens coming down the road. So I just don't want to forget them and applaud it, so thank you.
Absolutely. And the committee absolutely agrees with you as well. Thank you. Keith, is there anybody on the phone?
I see no one in the waiting room.
Okay. All right. I'm going to wait 30 seconds. I didn't receive any requests, so I am going to take it that I'm going to close public comments as well. Okay. We're moving on to old business. Brad, is there an update on school start times?
No, I don't have any update on school start times.
Stacy, can I ask a question? It's been a while since we've heard anything about school start times. So can you just tell us what the last update was? Because I don't remember, like, where are we? And forgive me for that, but I just, I feel a little bit unmoored when it comes to school start times.
A majority of our conversations, the only conversations we've had since the shutdown have revolved around the changes that the shutdown had on the impact study. And we had several meetings where we discussed, and ultimately, I announced to the committee that the impact study that I had designed was not going to be executed. Frankly, we have been so focused on developing and implementing the Remote Learning Plan and implementing remote learning that we have not had any time to focus on completing our planning for, at this point in time yet, for the changes to school start times.
Forgive me for this. I am hearing, people are asking me about rumors that we might not change school start times, and I just want to, I want to dispel that myth. The school committee has voted. This is what's happening. The fall looks very uncertain altogether, but we as a committee have not voted to suspend that vote. So unless I'm missing something, which is entirely possible, it's my understanding that our committee has voted, and we are committed to implementing those changes for So no one's saying anything to the contrary, so I'm assuming that that vote stands, and that is the plan, and these rumors are just that.
I just, I think, just to piggyback on to that, I've heard the same rumors, and I just want to make sure, I just want Dr. Jackson to sort of, maybe you can offer some reassurance that we are on track with whatever planning that we were doing minus the impact study, that we are still on track for the changes as voted.
We are behind schedule in our planning efforts because we have essentially lost two months of time where we have been devoting essentially all of our administrative time on the remote learning, on rolling out remote learning. So we are behind our plan in terms of, we are behind the timeline that we had hoped to be working along in this regard.
Does that compromise our ability to implement this effectively?
I am, there are a lot of moving parts for next fall, and I'm not even sure that we're, I mean, I can't even say with any certainty that when we open next fall, that there is, that we will have full school days or full class. I know nothing about next fall. That is part of the continuing planning that we are doing moving forward. I will be, I want to be upfront with the committee and say that changing school start times adds a level of complexity to this already extremely complex notion, but the school committee has voted to change school start times, and unless and until that changes, that is how this, that is what's going to happen.
Okay, that's, I think we need to maybe have a more thorough discussion than about this right now, because I feel like that we are now creating uncertainty. If it wasn't there before, it's there now. Rumors are not, and I think we all need to understand. What's that?
You asked the question.
So I think that we need to unravel this because now I feel like I'm not even sure, I think we need to start giving the community some answers on who, when we're going to be making these decisions, how we're going to be making these decisions. And when I say these decisions, I'm not just talking about start time, I'm talking about the whole big picture. Because I know, for example, you know, I heard in Needham that they're talking about doing, and this is rumor, I don't know this for a fact, but I just heard that in some communities, they're starting to talk about, you know, having kids do a schedule where, you know, one week they go to school Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the next week they're in school Tuesday, Thursday, so that kids are rotating through the buildings. I mean, I think there are a lot of different conversations that are happening about how the fall might look, and people are asking questions in spite of the fact that, you know, we're in crisis mode. I think we need to probably start offering up a little more communication to the community in terms of what we're doing and when decisions about these sorts of things are going to be made. And I realize there's a lot of uncertainty, and I realize we can't answer everything, but we need to be very clear, I think, about what we can and can't answer. So I will just put forward the question. When, who is going to make the decision, and how are we going to make the decision about the fall and what the fall?
The decision has been made. We voted a year ago.
Wait, I think she means in terms of the other stuff that the doctor.
That's not what she's asking, yeah. And I think, could I say something?
Go ahead.
You know, for what it's worth, and I know you know this, Lisa and Andy, but, you know, as we've sat every single Wednesday on budget, looking at the ramifications of this pandemic on the budget and trying to figure out what FY21 is going to look like, an enormous sort of question mark against that is the implementation plan for the school year. And in fairness to the administration, the complexity of that is extraordinary because, frankly, the buses are the least of the problem. You know, there's all kinds of different models, and I know the administration has begun looking at this. Our health professionals in the school have begun looking at this, trying to sort out what the best solution is. I've had conversations with Keith because ironically, the sort of worst-case educational solution, which might be a pure virtual world like we're in now, is not our worst-case financial situation. And that's so complicated. So when you start thinking about what a hybrid model might look like, so you can mitigate the population on a daily basis, and what the implications of that are for busing, for food, for washing hands, sanitation, et cetera, there are so many details to this that have to be thought through, and frankly, I'd like to have that mapped out personally sooner rather than later before we have to make any commitments on an FY21 budget, because we need to know that worst case, right, financially. And that's only one scenario, and there are a couple of others that I know they're trying to think through, and that's including adapting curriculum for a full year. So I guess my priority personally on this is let's plan for reality and then try to make sure we can layer in, you know, the things that we really want to happen, and that includes school start times, but it isn't done right.
But you're saying, I don't even know what reality is.
I don't either. That's what I'm saying. They need to focus on that as the priority and make that work, and that may change bus schedules as it is. So if you're not, if you're not sending, if you're only sending half the kids to school on some kind of modified schedule or something, that could dramatically change what the busing schedule looks like. And in my opinion, the priority is to figure out what the opening plan looks like for September 1, based on the guidance from the state and our local emergency management officials. And that plan ideally will contemplate how we do delayed start times, but it may look different, and I think we all need to understand that.
Okay, let me back up with a simpler question then. Are we going to get, when are we going to get guidance from the state? Do we know when we're going to get guidance from the state on the fall?
The state, the commissioner has put together a group of about 20 statewide educational leaders, from superintendents to school committee members, leaders of both unions, to develop a series of scenarios that may or may not need to be executed based on the, based on the status at the moment in time when you are, when we are scheduled to open. So the, and that So the, and that, they haven't had their first meeting yet. The, I, I, I think it is completely unrealistic to expect that we will be able to tell people with any level of certainty what the opening process for school is going to be until mid-August.
Okay, that's really good information to have and I think maybe it's time to share that with the broader community. So I think, I think maybe where my mind is going with this and everyone else can feel free to weigh in, because I realize I'm talking a lot. But I really think we need to start sending out, and by we, I mean the administration, because you guys can actually send something out at a moment's notice, whereas we can't, because we have to wait till we need and approve the information, by which time it is already out of date. But I would love to see the administration send out even a short email weekly to the community, giving an update on some of these big picture items. I think people need to know that we are not going to know about the fall until mid-August. I think people need to know that we're not going to know about extended school year until the day before extended school year starts or whatever it is. But I do think we need to start listing the, you know, some of the key parts of this incredibly complex picture. And just telling people, I think even telling people what we don't know at this point is actually really helpful. Because it helps people plan the best they can. It helps us avoid rumors and speculation. And it gives people a sense that we are, that we're on top of it. And yes, we're thinking about these things, but we just haven't gotten to it yet. For, you know, for example, we started getting, as soon as the, uh, school was announced, that school was going to be closed, like within seconds, I think I was getting emails about how kids were going to get their backpacks or whatever stuff out of various schools. And I think people just need to be reassured that, yes, this is on our list. We may not get to it for a while, but A, B, C, D, E, F, these things are all on our list and I'll shut up now. Thanks for indulging me.
Okay, so I want Brad to be able to respond to that if he does, if he has a response. Otherwise, I'm gonna.
Oh, I think, I, I, I think that Lisa makes a good point. I, I just want to, I, the, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. This is not a, the planning is the ongoing. It's which plan we will have to execute that we won't know until August 15th. The one factor in this whole thing that no one knows is what is going to be the status of the virus at that point in time. And that is why these decisions can't be made until we know that. That's one of the reasons why we know, won't know about extended school year until we know the status of the virus around June 25th. We won't know about the status of, of extended day summer program until we know what the status of the virus is. That's frankly, not to pick at a, at a scab, but that's one of the reasons why it is so darn difficult to make this graduation decision. Because where we don't know what the status of the virus is going to be in July 25th. And, and, and so, you know, everyone is taking, is making guesses and that's, and that's all anybody can do. I do, you know, I don't even know what the governor is going to say supposedly at the end of next week, right? He's supposed to say something about starting to open, I don't know what, I mean, so, so, you know, we are all going to have to live with a incredibly high level of uncertainty for, until this, until the certainty of the virus goes away. And because it is the virus, the uncertainty of the virus and its, and how it is progressing through the population that is, that is driving the uncertainty in all other areas. It is not for lack of planning, but for lack of being able to predict where we are going to be at a certain date, on a certain date.
Right. And I think uncertainty, I mean, we can't, we can't take away the uncertainty. But I think even those, the shreds of information that you've just given us in the last 15 minutes about, you know, the, the group that the gov, that the education commissioner put together. You know, those pieces of information are, are really valuable. Even if it's not what we want to hear, even if there's, everything is wrapped up in a lot of uncertainty, just knowing who's doing what and what questions are being contemplated, I think is super helpful for people and reassuring.
But I, and to go off of that, Lisa, I want us to be very clear about the school start times. Because the way the rumor came to me was, oh, we're going to hold off for a couple of years. I want the message to be very clear about planning and why maybe planning has taken a little bit longer or we haven't finished the plan. But I want to be very clear about that because it sounded like the direction of the district and the school committee was changing. And that is not the message that I want out there.
So I think we need to ask if, if the superintendent could start doing maybe a weekly alert of some sort, even if it's brief to parents. So maybe we need to say in there that the start times vote is still what it is. The start times vote has not changed. And that piece, you know, you can just throw that piece in the pot with all the other uncertainty. Because yes, start times are going to have to change again if we have kids going to school for three hours a day or four hours a day or whatever it is. We just don't know. But I think laying that out and being super transparent with the community would put people's minds at ease. And as much as we can, given the circumstances. And I think it will also allow people to plan better. Because when you can tell your boss, you know, look, we've heard from the schools, we're not, I can't tell you what my schedule is going to be like in the fall. Because the schools are telling us, we're not going to know until mid-August or the end of August or whatever. I think that those, even, even verification about what we don't know at a time with this much uncertainty is strangely enough reassuring.
Okay, so Dawn and then Ann-Louise.
Okay. And I, I respectfully, I understand that you're planning for a number of scenarios. But one of those scenarios might very well be start times at Hollston Public School that includes 7:30, 8:10 and 8:50. So I guess what I'm trying to understand, there was a lot of planning underway between the December 12th vote and the communication to the community on December 17th, up and until school was out on March 13th. And so I, I understand there's been a pause in that, but I'm, what I'm trying to understand, and I think it might help too, for the community to understand what still needs to be planned in order to do this implementation.
I can report that back to the committee at the next meeting. I, I, I wasn't prepared to talk at this level of specificity about this tonight.
Ann-Louise and then Joan.
This is just a quick suggestion. I mean, it'd be great if the communication went out weekly. It would also, I think, be helpful to have something on our website and to have those communications there. I'm getting them from the colleges my kids go to. And every one of them has a, like, right on the homepage, COVID-19 update. And here's where we're at in our plans for opening, you know, for, for what we're doing to address the opening in September. And like Lisa said, I mean, it's frankly incomplete right now. But what you're getting a sense of is where they're heading and what they're planning for. And of course, that, that affects everything that you do from flights to, you know, computer purchases. So if we could put that on the web somewhere, that'd be helpful.
Joan, you have a question?
Yep. I think there's two issues here. There's school start times and then contingency planning. And I, I'm a little confused about why school start times can't be embedded in those decisions. So that's confusing to me. But eventually, by the grace of God, go we, we will go back to a schedule where kids get on the bus in the morning and get off in the afternoon or go to school in the morning and go, maybe we'll never have that, but I'm hoping that we do. And so I think it's important to not, we, I don't want to have to recreate this wheel and this controversy again two years ago. It's already been three years. So keeping in mind what the school committee has voted, I don't see why that can't be part of contingency planning. And what I would like to see is a cross-sectional task force designated, dedicated to figuring it out with administration, school committee members, parents, because brilliant minds, when people get to brainstorming, great things come out of that. We've all been on different task force, school start times, T F, tuition free, full day kindergarten, strategic plan. And you see the power of that brainstorming. And I don't see why we wouldn't leverage that brainpower. And that body can be the one who communicates every week out to the community. This is what we're thinking about. This is what we're, because what I don't want is in the fall for us to announce something, a bunch of stuff and parents be like, why would you make that decision? So I think we, we can learn from our past experiences and do this in a very collaborative and transparent way.
I like that. And so Brad, I want Brad to take that information and I, I really like that suggestion, Joan, because I too have been thinking the same thing about having sort of a task force, if you will, for lack of a better term. Peter, I got a text that someone said you were trying to raise your hand and I totally missed you. So.
I just wanted to iterate that conversation, our beginning about next fall, that the, you know, building administrators as well as central office are, will know that we're going to have a big task of kind of coming up with different scenarios. And are 100% on board as they have been in constructing this whole, you know, remote learning plan. So it's, it's not something that's not on our radars. At the same time, you know, I do, I mean, principals, if you've seen them recently, they're not sleeping much. And they're working incredibly hard. So we can only go so far down certain rabbit holes of not knowing without, you know, completely burning people out. But at the same time, they absolutely know, I absolutely know, we all absolutely know that these plans are going to need to come in place. They're not going to be clean. We're not going to know a lot. As Dr. Jackson said, till, till, you know, it, till August, but the, the plans will come into play. Having some collaborative aspects to it, I, I support that. At the same time, I, I do want to, you know, also think about efficiencies as well and, and, and making sure that, you know, the building administrators are able to do that work with input, but in a way that's, you know, i- is going to have some efficiencies because they cannot, they cannot handle inefficiencies at this time. The work is way too complex with what we're trying to do right now to, to, to not take that into account.
Peter, thank you. And I, I respect that. And I'm wondering then, do we have the building administrators come to a couple of our meetings between now and the technical end of the school year to share some planning, et cetera? I, you know, like.
Or even one meeting. Let's not, let's not go crazy. Even one meeting before the end of the school year.
Right. I, I think maybe we should consider something like that.
Or maybe the superintendent or the assistant superintendent or both can, can collect information from them and, and give it to us, just so that we have, you know, as much of an update as we can possibly get. Because I don't want to, I don't want to seem, I don't want this conversation to be construed as we don't appreciate all the hard work of the teachers and administrators and we don't appreciate the fact that they are all of you recreating, not even a wheel, you're recreating the whole car with, you know, as we're driving it. And I, I, you know, this is unprecedented. And, and I think we, we all get that. My only point in, in saying the things that I've said tonight is just to encourage better communication and transparency, even on the important things we don't yet know. Because I, I think that's where we invite a lot of questions and speculation when we're not laying out the fact that yes, administrators, of course, are already batting around scenarios for, you know, what next fall might look like. I mean, I think we just assume things. We assume people know what's going on. And I think we need to be very careful and clear about communicating that.
I, I appreciate all that. I do think though, that we have to be, we also have to set expectations properly, that we cannot provide certainty in a time of uncertainty. And I don't want to, you know, we are, you know, to modify your metaphor a little bit, Lisa, building the airplane as it goes screaming down the runway, you know, the, you know, I'm just trying to tree, clear the tree line right now. And I have even, I have no idea what the destination is. So, you know, the people, you know, I, I, it is very understandable that people are looking for answers. And, you know, and to the extent we can give them, I certainly will do that. But there are a lot of things about which there are not answers. And, and there won't be answers because we don't know what the situation is going to be at a moment, at a certain moment in time. So I certainly can provide information about the planning efforts that are ongoing and the work that's going on to do that. But the, you know, these are, these are decisions that are essentially being made in real time right now. And I, I respect the fact that you are hoping that we can get ahead of the curve here. But I, right now, we are expending all of our energy to stay up, to keep up. And, and while there is high level planning going on, it has, it does not have a lot, we, we, we have not filled in any of the, any of the gaps. And, you know, and I'll communicate that to the best of my ability. But, you know, this, this is, this is, I think people are seeking certainty and when it is just not available right now.
Yeah, I think that's fair. And I'm not asking for certainty. I'm just asking for us to tell people what we know and to, and to do that a little more than we have been.
I, I just wanted to say, I think that what I'm hearing from people is they're just want to know that we are thinking about it. Because I think that they're not sure, what we know, they know we're not sure. But I think they want to know that we're aware of that and that we're, we're trying to figure out strategies, but we don't have guidance yet. So, but we are thinking about it, just so that people can, on a consistent basis, so people understand that they're going to have to be uncomfortable, comfortable with the uncomfortable uncertainty, I guess.
If you are getting emails from people that, you know, forward them to me, I have, I respond to every email that I get with a question or a, a, you know, if somebody wants to know about, you know, what's our, have we thought about how are we going to get students' belongings back? I'll be happy to answer that question. So, you know, there, there, if people want assurance that these things are going to be worked out, I'll be happy to provide that.
Thank you.
So I have listed down, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at my phone, looking at the agenda. I have, the next topic listed is FY21 budget discussion. So is there a, is there an update from the budget subcommittee?
I, we, at some point in time, we need to circle back to the COVID-19 update. I, we, at some point in time, we need to circle back to the COVID-19 update.
Well, so, yeah, let's do that first, because it goes in what we were just talking about. Sorry, I couldn't.
So Peter and I have three things we want to report out on tonight. I want to share the current update on the remote learning student participation data. I want to share some of the results of the middle school parent survey. And then Peter is going to share the, some information regarding our internal analysis of our remote learning plan against the revised guidelines that came out of DESI and any tweaks that we plan on making. So in terms of student participation, our student participation data for the weekend in May 1st continues to be strong. We are holding steady on all levels at Placentino. Participation in Zoom calls remains at 97%. Some work submitted is at 89%, and, which has been running between 88, 90, and 89%. And our all work submitted for grades K1 and 2 remains steady from two weeks ago at 62%. At Miller, participating, participation in Zoom calls remains high at 97%. Some work submitted is at 92%, and all work submitted is up three points from the week before, from 80% to 83%. At the middle school, in the past two weeks, we have been tracking participation in live sessions. The, in the weekend in 4/24, that participation in all live sessions was 60% and is now up to 67%. I do have, we're tracking participation in live sessions only. We don't, we haven't figured out a way to participate, to figure out, to track students participating in the recording, recording of the live session. So I would say that that's a minimum number that are participating. The numbers for some work submitted are 98%. There were only 10 students last week who did not submit any work at the middle school. They are essentially the same students who, from two weeks ago. And we are, remain in touch with their families, with the service providers and with the state authorities. And at the middle school, all work submitted is now up to 79%. Started at 50% on, on April 10th, went to 67%. And in the last two weeks, it's between, been between 80 and 79%. At the high school, our Google class usage is at 80, 80%. Google Classroom or Gmail usage is at 93%. And with this, this, for the week ending 5/1, we began tracking live session attendance. This number is very high, 89% numbers that we are very, I'm very pleased on. So we do have this information on a grade-by-grade basis. These are school, school-wide data. So I, I, we continue to monitor this. I think our participant, student participation is, is very high and at really good levels.
Brad, before you go on. Can I stop you for a second? For the, in terms of the participation, I just want to share some feedback that I've been hearing from some parents, especially at the, the elementary level. Teachers have, have been doing a great job of reconnecting with families to say, hey, your student didn't turn this in, or hey, I didn't see your child on a Zoom. I think it might be worth it just reiterating whether Mr. Coman and Mrs. Flaney do it in their weekly update that it's not a, we're out to get you, parents, you're not, your kid's not doing their work. It's just really a true, the district is trying to make sure that we're connecting with our students. I just think there's a little bit, I just wanted to share that feedback with you that I've been hearing.
This is a, thank you, Ms. Rafi, that, that's helpful. I do want to, you know, our, our expectation is that the work we're assigning should be done. School is in session, although it is remotely. If there are extenuating circumstances at the family level, then we understand that. And if those are communicated to us, we will, you know, those, those issues are understood. But we, we are hoping for collaboration and cooperation from our families so that students do participate in the remote learning opportunities that we are providing. That is one, particularly since we have long since abandoned the no new material concept. Students, student participation is important. And I really, I, I don't, I, I, I certainly want to make sure that we're not doing it in a judgmental way, and that feedback is helpful. And it is not intended to be judgmental. But I do think, I do think, much like in face-to-face, when your student, you know, when your student is not completing the work that's been assigned to them in class, I think parents have a right to expect a phone call to say that. And, and so we are trying to maintain that connection, both for, just to ensure good connection, as well as to just continue to reinforce as best we can the importance of this work. As the governor said, this is not summer vacation. In terms of the remote, the parent remote learning survey at the middle school, we had some very interesting results. We asked parents to rate the time they spent, that their students spent on the five core subjects per day. I have these actually, I probably should have done the average, but zero to one hours was, was between 0 and 2.5%. 1.2 hours ranged from 17 to 32 and 1/2%. Two to three hours, we do ask people to rate two to three hours, three to four, and four-plus hours. The weighted average of time spent per day on the five core subjects, grade six was 3.07 hours. Grade seven was 2.6, almost 2.7 hours, and grade eight was 2.7 hours. This is, this is a weight, this is an average. And I, this is parent, comes from parent reporting. The DESI target is half-day, which is three hours. So we are in the ballpark in all those cases, which we were very pleased to, to see. The, we also asked the question, would you like to see a workload change? In grade six, 65% of the parents said they'd like the workload to remain the same. 20%, 20% of the parents, there's some decimals here, so this may be a little plus or minus to 120%, wanted a decrease in workload, and 14% wanted an increase in workload. At grade seven, 59% of the parents wanted the workload to remain the same. Only 10% wanted it to decrease, and 30% wanted it to increase. And in grade eight, 65% wanted the workload to stay the same. 5% wanted it to decrease, and 30% wanted it to increase. So we have that data broken down by team, and we're using that to assess parent perception of the workload on a team-by-team basis with an effort to address any incongruities that we're seeing in the reported data to, which I essentially think is going to up. The incongruities are, are probably in the low end as opposed to the too-much-work end. So that's the work that the middle school is now working on to dig, dig through that data to, to correct any of the inconsistencies that may be happening on a team, from team to team. So that's my report on the remote learning survey from middle school and the student participation data. So before I turn it over to Peter for the other piece of our presentation, did anyone have any questions for me on that data?
Dawn.
I had a few questions, and that was, I have an ongoing concern that when we're talking about essentially 15 to 18 hours of work for our middle schoolers, based on the 3.7 hours per day for sixth grade and the 2.7 hours per day for seventh grade and on, that we have only about 2.5 to three hours, which are live, synchronous, collaborative, interactive instruction. And the rest of the time, in an especially isolated and solitary point for all families, we're asking the kids to do the learning on their own. And there's certain subjects in my mind that might, you know, science or social studies, reading an article and responding to questions, but there's also certain subjects that benefit from enhanced or more live instruction, collaboration, interaction, being able to ask real-time questions. And my concern, also on an equity level at the middle school, is that the way we have teams set up, we have the only 30 minutes of math instruction that our middle school students get each week. There are 80 kids logging in if you're on Team 2 or Team 1. So essentially, we have a class size of 80 up towards 100. And I'm wondering if that is in some ways impacting that 60 to 67% that are showing up for live instruction? Because if you have 80 kids on a call for your only 30 minutes of live math instruction, it becomes difficult to ask questions and to interact in real time. So I'm, I'm wondering, as we look forward, as we do our next surveys, we have two 30-minute segments of office hours. I would really like to know how many kids are showing up for those two 30-minute sections of office hours, and if there's a way to flip the model and maybe provide more live, interactive instruction, or even reduce the class size down to 40. So with the way our teams work, Team 3 might have a class size of 40 to 45 kids on that 30-minute call, but Teams 1 and Team 2 do not. And all four sections are being compounded together. So that, so I guess just looking forward to additional surveys, maybe, I, I appreciate that we're looking at whether it's enough work and, and kind of quantifying the work, but also the quality of instruction, if we could build on more live synchronous learning.
That's good feedback. Thank you. I think as, as, as you suggest, the, the issue around, so the first thing we've, and this actually follows, I don't want to take Peter's thunder here, but this actually follows the DESI suggestions. The first thing you do is check and make sure you're making connections. The second thing you do is you, you know, check to make sure that your quantity is, is meeting guidelines. And then now, now the work, which is, as you suggest, is to work on quality. And that quality is very, you know, is, is, is an ongoing effort at all levels. One, one principal today told an interesting story that I actually hadn't thought of, but the, at an elementary Zoom class with a reading instruction taking place, the teacher had a reading, someone in there to help with small group instruction, and never hadn't figured out how to really utilize that person until, until when they talked to their tech integration specialist, they said, oh, well, there's not a waiting room, but a breakout room feature in Zoom. And they said, ah, of course, breakout room. I can put the tutor in the breakout room with a small group and do, and have simultaneous instruction going on. These are, this is a quality improvement that comes with familiarity with the medium and familiarity with online learning. And I think, you know, and I am very excited about that, those, those expansions and improvement in quality that are happening. You know, the, so I agree with you that quality, the quality assessment is the next step.
Joan.
I have a couple of questions. One, I didn't realize 80 people could be on a Zoom call. So I'm wondering if there's connectivity problems, like maybe the, the statistics of, I mean, taking attendance with 80 kids? That would take up 28 of the 30 minutes. I don't, I don't understand that. And I don't, I, I want to understand the rationale behind the decision-making where 80 kids on 30 minutes of math a week was a good idea. Maybe that's a question for you, Peter, but, you know, I heard about this for the first time today, and I was gobsmacked. So bring me into the light, so I'm not gobsmacked.
I mean, I can dig into, well, I'll dig into that question, and then it kind of dovetails. I mean, I think they continue to make shifts. I mean, one shift that's gone on at the middle school, just in this new phase, is having one recorded session with more direct instruction, one live session, and then one office hour sessions in order to, you know, have that direct instruction time is more of a delivery time. The live session is a combination of delivery, but more interactive and questioning. And then the office hour is more questioning and answering based upon kids' unique needs. So as, as far as that attendance piece, it attendance tracks automatically, so they don't, they're not taking time during that session to, you know, take attendance. It's, it's done through, through an electronic system. But I think just all in all, the, we're continuing to iterate, you know? And so shifts are being made based upon an analysis of survey data and, and, and other things. And we'll continue to iterate throughout both at the middle school and throughout the district. And that's kind of what, should I dig into, do you have other questions, or should I dig into?
I just, I don't, I don't mind telling you that I was disturbed to hear that a decision was made, that in our district, we would have 80 kids with one teacher for 30 minutes. I just, I, I, I'm still not understanding that, the logic behind that decision. Having said that, you're at a higher pay grade than I. I just wanted to understand it a little more. I understand this is an evolving process, but you, there's no opportunity to ask questions if there's 80 kids. And, and I understand there's an interactive section, session, but in that interactive session, aren't there 80 kids? I'm, I'm just, I'm, I was so taken aback by it that I just, I just want to understand it.
Yeah, I, I'll need to, the 80 kids, I don't, I'll need to dig into that more to, to know. I, I think there are some situations where that is the case, but I'm not sure if that is the, the norm. And when that is the case, what kind of analysis is doing about how that, how they're using that in a way that's effective?
Anne Lloyd.
Maybe it'd be useful to also have, I don't know, David Jordan or Just Beatty kind of, you know, with all respect to Peter, like, there's, there may be some, like, day-to-day gory details here that would help shed light on the whys and wherefores. that would help shed light on the whys and wherefore's. I don't know what you think about that, Peter, unless you want to go for it next time we get together.
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, there are some things that are, again, like, that are completely consistent that are, which include, again, the new iteration at the middle school is minimally one live session, one recorded session, and one extra help office hours. There are other things that are more team by team. So some of those nuances I can get for, you know, from David and Jess, or bring them along.
Is that supposed to happen, be happening now? Or is that what you're going to be talking about for next week? Because that's not happening for my middle schooler at Team Three. He only gets thirty minutes of instruction for each class.
No recording.
There's no like, there's no instruction than a live, like a direct instruction live lesson, and then office hours. There's one thirty minute block of instruction, direct instruction, and then office hours. That's it.
And that's a shift that's being made, yes.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the previous model was a live session in two office hours, and now it's switching to this.
So Peter, do you want to go into the information that you want to present tonight beyond that stuff that you kind of presented?
Yeah, yeah. So at the end of April, the department put out guidance on Phase Three of Remote Learning. And it, it kind of came as we were reflecting upon our process and continued to iterate. The guidance was kind of very strongly aligned to what we were doing, which was very reassuring. It was broken up into two parts. The first part was strengthening our remote learning program for all students. And the second was developing a system for identifying and supporting struggling students who are having difficulty engaging. That first part about strengthening remote learning, the first part of that was around prioritizing meaningful connections. And so all schools are continuing to prioritize that. The high school model continues to be kind of more of that schedule of two sessions for up to fifty minutes per course, per week. At Adams, as we've just discussed, was they've shifted to a one live session, one recorded session, and one office hours minimally per week for all. And the elementary school is going from the previous two live sessions to three live sessions per class in their home classes. Those sessions could come in to play as being a full group session, but typically not more than one full group session at the elementary level with other sessions that might be small group or even individual check ins. The second part of the guidance came around new content. So it talked about providing engaging instruction focused on the prerequisite content standards that are most critical for success in the next grade. So the state put out this, these documents at the secondary and elementary level that gave guidance on what they deem to be most essential for success in the next grade. So all the schools have used those documents in order to analyze what is, what has already been addressed in the courses that are being taught and what is yet to be addressed? And using that to inform, along with internal standards documents that they, they've had, what they should focus on for the remainder of the year. So all the lessons and instructions for the remainder of the year are informed by this analysis. The middle school, each individual teachers or course partners are doing this work at the high school level. At the middle school, every course has outlined the scope and sequence for the remainder of the year that takes into account this analysis. And the elementary teachers, along with curriculum specialists and grade leaders, are doing this analysis and using that to inform. So initially, in those first three weeks, we were putting together instruction that was enrichment and that was as engaging as we could and it was as accessible. And now we've really dug into like, hey, what is the most essential content using these useful documents from the state that will allow us to maximize the learning in this unique and extraordinary time? These documents also will be incredibly helpful in informing next year's teachers about this is what we've been able to address significantly. Obviously, different kids are going to still be in different places, and we're going to have to assess their needs based on that. But we can at least be able to map out this is what this course has been able to address significantly with this school closure period and be able to have that information for future teachers to know where to begin. And we will also know that will allow us to, again, really focus on what is most essential. These questions, you know, we've been asking those questions for years, but this has kind of put a greater pressure. It can be leveraged in positive ways. We've, the part about, you know, part of the guidance from the state was around making learning accessible and manageable, realizing that kids are in all different types of circumstances. And though we certainly want to continue to make adjustments, I think the data, you know, that we're finding is we're in the ballpark. And so we still need to continue to improve. We still need to continue to analyze. But, you know, this is an incredibly challenging time. I think all of you know with your kids at home what this, what this can look like. I know what it looks like at my house. And so, you know, we'll continue to make that as accessible as possible. A high school, you know, really uses more teachers to direct student communication through Google Classroom. The middle school and the elementary models of having those weekly plans that really help people to, like, begin to look at what this week might look like. Our models throughout the state is very much, they were pretty much describing what we were doing. We continue to tweak those plans. The middle school elevated some of the core content to the top of the plan in order to make it stand out more. The elementary continues to tweak those plans to make them more useful. But we're, we'll continue to use that kind of format for kids. We continue to support our students with disabilities and our English language learners with specialized supports. Those remote learning plans, support service plans for students with disabilities have been developed by liaisons in conjunction with parents. Our English language learners teachers, a collaboration with classroom teachers, have reached out specifically to our English language learners to assess their needs, to give them individualized supports, to make sure that they're in this very difficult time accessing the learning. Because that can be an extraordinarily daunting thing for a child who may have arrived in this country just a short time ago. But there's extra efforts going on into that. We also continue to emphasize, as the state wanted, the components beyond the core instruction, aspects around arts and wellness and in music. And those are being built in to the plans as well as at the elementary and middle school level, the middle school level. Now all specialist teachers are also going to be offering one recorded session, one live session, and one office hours, as well as some, you know, special things around art and wellness activities that kids can engage in that also exists at the high school in the form of special offerings during DSP. And so that work is kind of, you know, making sure we emphasize that and giving kids an opportunity to not only dive into the core academics, but also be able to, you know, engage in art and music and especially physical activity and wellness that will allow them to perform better in everything. This all then goes into part two of the, of the guidance was around identifying supporting students not effectively engaged in remote learning. So some of the data that Dr. Jackson shared, that data is being analyzed on a weekly basis by all the, all the buildings in order to identify kids in need, in order to reach out to them and give them specialized supports. Yes, and certainly the communications are intended to be a supportive tone while still wanting kids to not fall behind. So I'm sure that, you know, Mr. Kine and Dr. Slaney, you know, will continue to instill that in their staffs. And I know the staff, that's their intention. In addition to that, this analysis is also used to continuously, again, make improvements to the overall program. That might serve especially kids who are struggling, but also might make it better for kids who are not struggling, but we want to make it more effective. So this next phase continues to be analysis and reiteration, but also looking at the quality of instruction. How can we get even more effective in the way that we instruct in order to serve kids during this, during this time? But I think any feedback is always welcome.
Ann-Louise and Cynthia?
Okay, I feel like I need to breathe for you.
I know it was a long meeting, so I wanted to.
That was a lot, but thank you very much for that incredibly thorough overview, Peter. I just have a quick question, and I, it may sound like a dumb question. But the whole recorded session thing, is it, is that because it gives kids the flexibility to kind of fit it in when they're ready and able to access the curriculum? And if so, you know, so that they can manage their day? Like, you know, as kids get younger, it's hard to just like plop down for, you know, four or five hours like the high school kids sitting there. And even for them, it's called staring at a Zoom for that long. But is that the reason? Is it flexibility? And if so, is anyone measuring whether, how that pairs up against their ability and likelihood to engage? And I don't know how to express this, but there's like a funny sense of aloneness when you're looking at a recorded session. Do you know what I'm saying? And I think the loss of engagement is one of the biggest challenges that we're facing with remote learning. And so I'm just wondering, when we look at the total hours of learning, it might be X, but the hours of connected learning is less because of that? So I'm just, I'm just curious where that.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a.
State guided, I get all that.
Yeah, there's a heavy, heavy emphasis at the state about asynchronous learning, recognizing that kids need some flexibility in their schedules. And also, we want to kind of maximize collaboration with, among teachers. So some of these asynchronous opportunities and recordings are being done by the teacher that typically teaches them. And then there are other cases where teachers throughout the system, I notice at the elementary, are sharing, you know, interactive videos that they've done with, you know, throughout the grade level in order to make those as high quality as possible. So it's a combination, I think, of the two reasons, you know, why those are. And it's, you know, it's kind of, it's maximizing on, you know, some previously, you know, employed methods around kind of flipped classroom where some of the direct instruction that does, is not necessitating as much of the interactive will be delivered that way. And then some of the more, you know, interactive times will be done differently. I mean, I think also in some classes, there's a lot of emphasis on, you know, more of a, you know, kind of kids working on some kind of open ended question or project where teachers are trying to get involved as kind of facilitators. And with the idea that that's the type of learning we want kids to be doing, but also it's something when kids are working more independently, it makes sense for them to kind of be digging in and trying to kind of work through some more complex problems while still having access to their teachers to answer questions and facilitate. But less being the kind of sage on the stage and more being, you know, a facilitator of learning, especially, you know, again, something we're striving for generally and something that makes a lot of sense in this, this environment.
Cynthia?
Hi, thanks. Thanks, Peter. I guess one of the things that I wanted to ask you about was, as you re, as you retool this a little bit, is the vertical alignment. And this sense that, you know, I have three kids in three different schools, and each of that looks very differently. And the teachers, some of them are using Google Classroom and using Google Meet. Some are using Zoom, some are using Moodle, some are, it is a lot of different venues that they're using to access the curriculum. And I, as a parent trying to help your kids navigate that now, I will say with my high schooler, like she's got a very set schedule, and she knows how to manage that on her own. I do think that it's harder at the elementary level that you're really trying to support them to get on board with that. And I can't, I don't have somebody at Placentino, but they have joined those two together. But the look and feel of how each of those are happening at each of the schools is very, very different. And so I just wonder for parents who have maybe three kids or more kids or whatever, as you look at it, to have that look more aligned, I don't know? Or to use the same materials? I mean, we've been working with Google Classroom for five years now. And I know we've had a lot of opportunity for teachers to train to use the different suite of materials there. So I just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, no, I think it's a, and it's a good point. I think we've, we've, you know, we've benefited from the fact that we have one K through two, one three through five, one six through eight, you know, where we can have a lot of consistency within the schools. And then we've also tried to, you know, kind of create, there's been much, much more collaboration pre-K through five than there typically would be. Not that they don't collaborate a lot, but it's been, you know, Jamie and Dave and the teachers there have worked together. There, there is room for, yeah, like I understand what you're saying as far as it's difficult when, even if you have different kids in different schools, having different platforms. So I think we kind of were trying to do the best we could with what teachers could, knew already and what they could take on. We wanted to also take advantage of, you know, Zoom has, you know, some more functionality. And so taking advantage of that, but it's certainly something to consider as far as can we get, you know, how aligned can we get while still maximizing the potential? So I think it's a balance between trying to be as aligned as much as possible between schools while also taking advantage of having certain, you know, schools that might be more tech savvy, like the middle and high school, and having them push forward. So, yeah, it's something to consider.
Dawn, you had a question?
I have two questions. So, and the first one would be, do you anticipate additional surveys by the middle school as we, you know, further continue to enhance the implementation of remote learning? But also, would you consider using surveys in Miller and Placentino and even at the high school to get feedback from parents regarding the implementation of remote learning to date?
I will check in with the principals on that. I think that at the middle school, I think it's committed to doing periodic surveys. I know that, you know, Miller, Placentino, and the high school are collecting data in various ways, but I'll check on their plans for any surveys from parents.
Thank you. And then the second question, and I speak from a place of ignorance because I didn't have any of my five kids in the French immersion program. But I am concerned about the ongoing success of our immersion program when we have such limited amount of time for them to speak and listen in French right now. And what does that look like at the, at the elementary level? Are they, how many minutes listening and speaking in French are kids getting at the French immersion program?
I think that they're moving to those three live sessions a week. There's also embedded within the templates, I mean, the, there's, there's read alouds, there's other activities that are in French. So recordings, or there might be more of a listening. There's also opportunities for them through platforms like Flipgrid to speak and share their ideas verbally. So I think the, the teachers and the leadership there are very aware of the challenges that come with remote learning within the French immersion program and are trying to kind of maximize opportunities for kids to read and listen and write and speak best they can within it. And so there's some, you know, again, there's a lot of opportunities around listening and reading in particular, but also some technology, both in a live session and a recorded session around speaking and such. So they're trying to balance those things and provide those opportunities so that we can kind of maximize this challenging time.
Peter, Brad, is there opportunity to use, not to use, to have the? not to use, to have the paraprofessionals work in small groups with the different levels? I, you know, I have my-
Our paraprofessionals are being used extensively, both to assist our students with special needs and to provide general class, you know, assist the teacher in general education classes.
And then the other thing I was thinking about earlier today, you know, God, your head could explode thinking about how, you know, education has changed. And part of me was thinking, what are the effects that we're having on our children by being in front of a screen so much? And, you know, I'm not, I'm not asking us to solve the world's problem. I know this is a big nut to crack. But I am, especially, you know, I was, I was on a community discussion today with Mary Greendale and some other members of the community. And Bob Malone shared his perspective on, you know, senior citizens and how many seniors are hesitant to use technology, et cetera. And it got me thinking, our littlest of learners don't know really how to use Chromebooks. They know how to just swipe on mommy and daddy's phone. So I'm, I'm wondering, do we have opportunity to work with Dr. Turk and the guidance department and the psychologists at all levels? But I was, I had a specific example with elementary, with our littlest kids in terms of the screen time. And how is that affecting them? And are they learning sitting in front of a screen? So just some thoughts, just a feedback to share with you.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say that we're going above the screen time than we, that we would typically desire. At the same time, I think if you look at the, you know, elementary, especially their weekly templates, it's embedded with lots of work that doesn't require screens. And it's also one of the reasons why they created those weekly and daily plans that showed, you know, some of the artwork or physical activity as well as work within the core that was intended to be, you know, picking up a book or writing or building something or exploring nature or whatever it might be. Those things are purposely embedded. At the same time, I would, I would venture to say we're still above what we would ideally be at, you know. So we're trying to strike that, strike the bounds in an extraordinary time.
And are, at the elementary level, are the educators able to move forward with Fanta's and Pennell? I know that there were specific, like, hard copy materials of books and stuff. Is that methodology? And are those materials available to those kiddos?
Some of them are. And I'd say they're, they're using some of the strategies that they developed as far as Reader's Workshop and, you know, interactive read-alouds and independent reading. And some of the, some of the kids are actually doing some, you know, ongoing reading assessments similar to the way they would do it face-to-face. So some of those practices are being used, and some of them are difficult to do.
Anne-Louise?
Just a quick thought, I was thinking about Dawn's comment about French immersion, and that has been on my mind. So I'll just make a quick suggestion and offer. The weird thing about this pandemic is everybody's home. So I've got, you know, three Frenchies at home. I mean, one is gainfully employed. But, you know, I've got my college student who just came back from a year in France and is majoring in French. And I've got my high school student who's, you know, finishing her final year in French. And, you know, in years past, sometimes these kids intern in the elementary classrooms. So Haley interred with Aaron Snyder. And it was like a wonderful experience for the little kids and for her. And I'm just wondering, these kids are home. A lot of them don't have internships. And they're, you know, but they're done, most of them, tomorrow, the college students. So just a thought, there might be an opportunity for them to assist at the elementary level to provide more one-on-one engagement and conversation. It could be fun games, I don't know. Just throwing that out there, they might kill me, but I would love that. I'll put them on. Yeah, they're yours, free of charge. What else are they doing except playing with the puppy? Okay.
Thank you, Peter. Did you have?
Yeah, I mean, one more thing, Stacy, on what you were asking about Fanta's and Pennell. I do know that the elementary teachers did have recently, if they didn't take them already, went and got all of their interactive read-aloud materials, the physical materials, and brought them home. That was one of the reasons why we had to kind of coordinate some safe ways for them to get back into their classroom. So again, a lot of the materials are being used.
Great, great, thank you. And then, did you have one, a third piece to COVID? No?
No.
Okay.
But the physical paper, kind of this, this Phase 3 addendum will be sent home to you guys and to parents this weekend.
Great, thank you. Are there any, were there any other questions under school closure? Dawn?
I know it was initially brought up by Mary in the introduction, but to the extent that graduation is part of the impact of COVID, and we're on this topic, is this an appropriate time to address it? Okay, so.
I absolutely think so. Yes, I think it's important. It is the hottest topic in town right now, in other towns, not just us. But absolutely. So Brad, can you give us more details on what is going on with graduation? And how decisions, when a decision is going to be made, and something, anything?
So Ms. Bottomley sent out an email to parents and students yesterday outlining the two main options that are available that make the most sense. One being a hybrid-type graduation on graduation day, a ceremony on graduation day that would, would be aligned with the current social distancing and group restrictions on group connections. And the second is a, is moving the day of celebration to July 25. And Ms. Bottomley outlined, from her perspective, the pros and cons of each option and asked the parents and the students to weigh in with their opinions. And those surveys, and she gave a deadline for response to the surveys of tomorrow. And we have already, we've already received, I think Peter and Nicole and I met on this late this afternoon. Oh, there may be 128 parents and 85 or 90 students had responded thus far. And so we're waiting for the remainder of the surveys to come in. And we expect to share the broad outline of a plan moving forward either tomorrow or early next week. We are, frankly, I wish we had the benefit of foresight to be able to see what the governor was going to be publishing, which we understand is towards the end of next week. From what I understand, he's, the governor's going to be publishing some information about, about, you know, the broad reopening plan. But we don't know what form that's going to take. So we're, we'll have to make a decision without that information. But we should, parents should hear and students should hear. If not tomorrow, then by early, early next week.
Is there a reason why we're not thinking worst-case scenario that, that the governor is going to delay, you know, reopening the state again? I just, there's a lot of data out there that suggests that we're going to be not opening up anytime soon in terms of businesses or very, very slowly. And social distancing rules are going to stay in effect. And if that is the case, is this a time when we say, you know what? Worst-case scenario, we think we're pretty close to that, that we should in fact push out to the last possible date, which is July 25? I just, I get this, this is, I understand. This is not a new decision. No one's going to be happy. We're not going to get a majority vote on this. But I do, after hearing Fire Chief Mike talk today a little bit about some stuff, you know, he made it sound like we're going to be wearing masks for months. So June 7 is going to be here in a couple of weeks. You know, can we, can we go with it's probably safe to think that the worst-case scenario is upon us? And we should consider trying to, you know, push it out? That being said, I know that many plans over the summer have already been canceled, events and whatnot. So I don't, none of us have a crystal ball. But, I don't know, it sounds like that's what the kids are asking for. And I don't know, I just wanted to offer that.
Thank you.
Dawn?
Thanks, okay. Um, I guess what I'm also wondering, so it's two quick questions, is why we can't delay the decision until we get more feedback from the governor if we're expecting that will occur on May 14 or 15? And then the second part of my question is also, these seniors are losing a number of events, including the awards nights, the futures, the, I, there's a long list, and we're all aware of it. Is there any hybrid model where we get to celebrate them via cars on June 7? But we plan to postpone the decision until we get more feedback from the governor after May 15? So, thank you.
Do you mean like a parade? Is that what you're talking about, Dawn?
Yeah, something, something on June 7 where we can celebrate them and try and hit some of those things, like the senior awards, the futures, the, and Anne-Louise will know all the right words here. But there's like eight to 10 major things these kids were looking forward to. Is there a way to preserve June 7 in some format in terms of car parade? But also delay this decision until we know more? And it sounds like we may know more as early as May 15.
Do you want Anne-Louise to answer that, Stacy, or me?
You go first and then Anne-Louise.
This, there is a lot of frustration, understandably. There are understandably very high levels of frustration among our seniors and the senior parents who, much similar to the conversation we've had earlier, are looking for some answers. And the, so we, actually, we had this conversation, Peter and Nicole and I, just this afternoon about, gee, should we put this off? And our basic, the consensus of the three of us was, if we put this decision off for another week, we'd probably get lynched. So that's part of the issue. The other part of the issue is that delay, delay doesn't offer enough time to plan. So whatever happens on June 7, if we, so for example, if we say, you know what? We're going to delay the ceremony to be, to the July 25, that gives people the opportunity to do that planning that you had talked about, to talk about saying, well, what can we do as an alternative on June, on June 7, July 25 and June 7? But if, but the longer we put that off, we either kind of make by default the decision that nothing official is going to happen on the 7th because there is a lot of logistics that would go, that would go into planning any type of event where students would be, would be receiving their diplomas on June 7, distributing caps and gowns, figuring out how that was going to happen, setting up traffic patterns and those types of things. So, you know, we're at the point now where we need to make a call as best we can. And, and, you know, because I think we need to move from decision to implementation.
Thank you, Cynthia. I got the lips. Thank you. So I'd like to clarify a few things from the position of the parents. And I'm going to take the liberty of doing this for the students as well because I've sat in on the meetings with them. And we heard Mary DeBeau tonight talking about student council. And I think there may be some misunderstanding here, especially when I hear that you feel you're going to be lynched. There is frustration. That frustration has as much to do with communication as-
That was a poor choice of words. I apologize for that. That was, that was a poor choice of words.
Because I just-
I think parents would be disappointed and students would be disappointed if they are anticipating-
I'm not so sure. Okay, I appreciate the correction there. I'm not so sure. And here's why. You know, what they, what they're looking for is some communication and a bit of collaboration. And what I mean by that is that if you set expectations, people are reasonable. I have read through dozens of emails now from parents that have been sent to me. Many have been sent to the Committee at Large. I have read through any number of posts on Facebook at this point that have been going on for weeks now and other channels as well. I've received phone calls without exception. I have been stunned by the empathy for the complexity of planning this, the support, as well as the desire to help. And sometimes they can, sometimes they can, I appreciate that. But every single one of these emails has been respectful. And so I just want to say, there's been nothing-
I'd be happy to forward a few that might, that you might not characterize.
Ah, well, maybe I'm on the receiving end of respect. I don't know what to say. But every one of them has been. And so I think by and large, our parents get that this isn't an easy situation. And the students get that too. I have been impressed by the maturity and the innovativeness with which they have tried to problem-solve something that in all honesty, the complexity goes beyond the scale and experience of an 18-year-old, okay? And that started back when prom was still on the radar. But the kids have done a pretty impressive job at that. What they are asking for is not a commitment to a specific scenario. They're asking for time. And they understand that a delay could result in exactly the same scenario that might occur on June 7. So I think when, when in the meeting, the, there were concerns raised by the administration about June 7 coming and going, the students said, oh, no, 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 but we've got a plan for that. And that was when the concept of a goodbye parade was introduced by the students. They want to decorate their cars, they want to be able to come up to the school. They expressed- They expressed a desire to say goodbye to their teachers. And that was really, I think, heartwarming. It wasn't just saying goodbye to each other. My own daughter said to me, I didn't know March 12th was my last day until a month later. I didn't get to say goodbye to them. So they want to see their teachers lined up six feet apart. If the teachers can come, if they're able, if they want to, they'd like to be able to wave goodbye. They want to hoot and holler over it, you know? With, maybe with their families in the car. That was their idea for the goodbye parade. Now, I understand that the current proposal on the table, what you called a hybrid, it's modeled on the Medfield solution. What was most interesting about the Medfield solution, I was impressed by a few things. One, it was clearly developed several weeks ago. They have that down to the last minute of detail, the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted. So that I, I had to commend them on. In addition to that, they clearly had a committee that included not only direct administration and emergency management professionals, but they approached their school committee as well with the plan. And I, I thought that was of interest and they all, Milton, sorry, not Medfield, forgive me. And that they, you know, there, there was that collaboration in it. And for their community, that is what they chose to do. So I think that's, that's totally fine. And our kids understand that that solution might be okay, but they're asking for the time. They recognize that on July 25th, there may be exactly the same restrictions that we have in place today, in place then. Having said that, even today, where social gatherings are limited to 10 people, those are indoor restrictions and/or free gatherings out in the open, which is why open parks are a problem and recreation fields. But just this past week, the police academy celebrated their graduation at Gillette, Gillette Stadium with all the officers on the field socially distanced. I have been impressed by the number of communities that have managed creatively to come around with solutions that are pretty impressive. There's a superintendent in Pennsylvania who was showcased on the news with a plan to use the football field. And he said, the gridiron is a perfect social distancing gridiron. And they showed an overview of the field and it was like a football play by play, the way they were drawing out the Xs where the students would stand. And it can accommodate over 300 students, which was his graduating class size. And they had a plan for how they were going to marshal the kids in, marshal the kids out and where the parents would be. You know, those kinds of things have been thought through. And, you know, they recognize there's concern in, you know, for things that could go wrong, but they're planning around those things. And he drew that plan, interestingly, by going to the supermarket and big box retail stores like Walmart that are deemed essential businesses and picking up on every single tactic they're employing to manage larger crowds in parking lots, et cetera. So I, you know, I think what the students are asking for, what the parents are asking for is for us to be able to step back and in the spirit of holist and innovates, think through some of those options in the hope that by July, July 25th, an in-person celebration could happen. Couple more points on this and you'll have to forgive me for the time. I know it's been a long meeting. This is about the students being with each other. Parents are a nice to have, everybody else is kind of an extra. And I'm throwing that out there, being a parent. And as much as I would like to hand my third child her diploma, that's not the priority. The priority is for these students to be able to look at each other, even if it's six feet apart, and raise their hands and say, we did it, we got here. Because for some of these kids, that's it. It's not going to happen again. And they care about being together. Those are the words that were used in front of us. And if together means 25 students, they'll take it. If it means 50, even better. It may not mean 250 unless they can get on the gridiron. It might mean 250 kids in their cars popping through their sunroofs, six feet apart, parents inside, keeping them from jumping out. I don't know. But this is the spirit in which these kids are innovating. When I was asked about, well, how would we manage sanitizing folding chairs in between miniature ceremonies? It was pointed out to me that it would be too difficult to do that between ceremonies. So I said, great, let them bring their own chairs, their lawn chairs. They'd be delighted, beach chairs and sunglasses. The point is, I think when you let a few more minds come to the table, you may find that, that there's more support, that we can relieve some of the burden that I believe is being placed on the administration to sort all this out. And that that communication goes a long way. So it's not that the Milton model, I'm going to get it wrong, Milton, that the Milton model is terrible. It's just, it's not ideal and the kids are hoping that there might be something better if we delay. And I think that communication helps. And if Brad, you wanted to wait one more week because you and the administration would feel that you could give a much more informed answer with guidance from the governor, who's, we know it's a week away, I believe the parents would be okay with that. I believe the students would be okay with that. One last thought on the planning. Either scenario, there's a high probability some elements of this would need to be recorded, no matter how this goes. And there are several elements of this that frankly could be worked on right now. Your speech, Nicole's speech, speech of the president of the class. The, some of the music elements are going to have to be pre-recorded because they can't stand next to each other to do this. The only two things we don't know right now, we don't know who the valedictorian is and we don't know who the salutatorian is. That's pretty much it. So those things that could be pre-recorded, I think you could begin effort on that now with an eye toward either of the dates, either of the celebrations, and minimize the angst of the last minute planning. Because I know, I know that Ms. Bottomley needs like a solid 30 days to feel comfortable. She's got all the logistics going and that's fair. That makes perfect sense. So why not get started on some of it if we can? I guess I'll leave it at that. I know, I know that this is a really tough burden on Ms. Bottomley in particular. I think everybody appreciates that. And if it's come off in any other way from me as a class representative, my colleague Hillary, or any of the parents, then I will offer a collective apology. I don't think that was anybody's intent. They're just looking for a little partnership and communication here. And if the choice is that you need to wait, I offer that to you freely.
Brad, did you want to respond?
No, I, I, I understand that the, any, any communication that would be forthcoming in the next day or so would not include what the selected day would look like, but would just include the, the selected date so that people can make plans. So for example, if July 25th was the selected day, the, you know, we certainly would not be announcing what graduation is going to look like on July 25th because again, that's an issue that would have, those are, those are decisions that are best made closer to that date so that we can maximize the chances of as authentic a ceremony as possible. If, and on the, and on the flip side, it would also increase the chances for the community and the timeline for the community, the parents and the students to plan some sort of effort, that's not the right word I'm looking for, but some, something to commemorate the actual graduation day. So, you know, I, I think, I think that, you know, we, I hear everyone. I appreciate everyone's flexibility and patience. I know this is very, very challenging and an emotional time for everyone. I, I can only imagine, I mean, I, I think of my own children and the memory that, that I have that, that of even of my high school graduation. So I know this is, I recognize this is a big deal. And I guess my only, my only message in this is to not, to separate the, to, to that, you know, that this, the, you know, this is, this is an issue that has not been caused by an individual or a decision maker. This is an issue that's been caused by a virus. And our, while any frustration has, you know, is understandably directed toward, it's very hard to be angry or frustrated with a virus. It's a little easier to be frustrated or angry with a person or people or a school system or the governor or whatever. I think we have to keep our focus on the fact that, that, that people are doing the best they can with the information they have and are, and I don't suggest for a moment that anyone on this committee feels otherwise. But I just think that it's important to state that, for anybody who might be listening, that, you know, that the teachers are doing the best they can and would do more live sessions if they had, if they had time and the ability to plan them and the ability to, and the students were available and they could coordinate a time among students. And, you know, this is just people doing the best they can in a crappy situation. And, you know, and I think, you know, recognizing that's an important aspect for us as a community to, just to continue to remind ourselves.
I have one more question about this, Stacy. I just want to clarify something or have you clarify it? I'm sorry, I can't be talking and not unmute and have that not ring because it's on the computer. So the one concern about July 25th, the impression. Hang on, forgive me, I don't know what's going on here. The one concern about the 25th is, as it was presented, some students and a number of parents have reached out to me because they were given the impression, I don't know that this was intentional, that if even a single student couldn't make it on the 25th, the event would be canceled. Like if that date was chosen now, for instance, and for whatever reason, health reasons, militaries, you know, early departure from college, if even a single student couldn't come, it would be canceled. I don't think that was the intent of that messaging. I think the intent was simply to say, these are the, you know, cohorts and circumstances we're concerned about and we want to make sure every student can attend. But that's a different message than if they're English, even a single student can't, we're going to cancel it. People were afraid to make a choice because that was how they read it.
Ann Louise, if you were, if that was a question or comment directed at me, I lost my internet connection. So I didn't hear it.
Okay. The way, the.
I don't think the intent was that. I do think the intent was to share that a great concern about, you know, a different date that students would not be able to attend.
Right, and, and I think, and I think our students were concerned because again, they want to be with their friends. So they wanted to make sure that the date selected, they, they backed it up from the second to the 25th, but they wanted to make sure the date they selected accounted for students who would be potentially leaving for southern, southern schools that start, you know, early in midsummer. The military situation, I, I don't know when the military academies start offhand. So maybe that's being looked into. But I know Mrs. Bottomley was going to look into the southern schools and we had suggested connect with guidance. Let's just look into the, exactly the schools that our kids are committed to. And then there's definitely a number of students for whom they may be immunocompromised or health compromised or sick right now. And if they are, frankly, I think a delay would, would buy more time for anyone affected directly by COVID, hopefully. But you never know, I, I appreciate that. But I think you're going to have that problem on June 7th too. So that was where the confusion was. So, you know, they just wanted an understanding of that.
So just, I can tell you that five parents have indicated that their students are unavailable on July 25th.
Okay, then, you know, that's, that's important. And maybe we need to understand, like, is it a Wednesday? Because it's summer, I don't know, people work, I get all that. But, you know, if the 25th itself is a problem because of the five students, did they suggest an alternative? What do we know? And, and do you know if, what the absentee rate might be on the 7th? Is it better, is it worse?
We didn't ask that question because the, we assumed that all students were available on the 7th since that's the, that's been gradu- graduation day planned for a year and a half. So that date's been known.
Right, but we're in circum, but we're in circumstances where for a number of reasons, students might not be available. So you could have the same problem then. So I guess that just, I don't know that we can reconcile that. We may not get 100% participation either way and I think we have to understand that. And may, and maybe that's why the, the idea of something on the 7th and the 25th works. I don't know. But I'll, I'll leave it to you to sort that out. And I think if you just, you know, if the results of the survey were communicated and maybe the date, that would be fine. Or if you even said, here are the results of the survey, you know, we'd like to ask that you, we're going to begin planning some of the fixed elements that we know about and we'd like to wait until the governor offers a little more guidance in a week. I think parents could handle that. I think students could too. But that's just a thought.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for this discussion. It's important, it's tough. But I hope that everyone feels like they've been able to share their thoughts. Are there any other questions about our big topic of school closure? Dawn?
Stacy, I just want to continue to go over, I know we had received an update on April 22nd and it was on a number of issues, but I am not sure regarding COVID and, and closure. And I just want to make sure that we've covered all of that because when I review the agenda, we have spring sports fee refund under new business, under section 10 subsection D, but we don't have the discussion about other fees. So that's one thing. In addition, I did want to bring up, because it falls under this category of COVID updates, because we're doing planning for the fall, we set the calendar. We are all hearing the same thing about a second wave or warning of a resurgence in the fall. And I guess I wanted to bring up under this topic whether we should be looking at the 2021 school calendar in light of the professional days that we had voted on that would include September 4th. They would include October, I guess October 12th is actually Columbus Day. But we also have an especially, we have a late school start date this year of September 1st and whether we want to begin to discuss tonight and then include it next time on the agenda. Any changes to the 2021 school calendar that might include moving the start date back a week and also looking to bump the September professional days in light of the fact that, you know, the former CDC director, Dr. Fauci are all, the guidance right now is we may see a resurgence in the fall or the latter part of the fall. So one of the things that happened this time around is that our teachers at least had the benefit of two thirds of the school year to get to know their students. It was a little bit awkward with term four in the high school where you have teachers who've never had a face to face with some of their students starting a class. But I think it's imperative to have the most amount of in-class school days in if we are contemplating that we may see this again in the fall. So I guess two things. One, can we talk about school calendar? And if not tonight, then maybe the next time we meet and maybe get Brad's thoughts on that. And number two, I believe that we are also talking about fees. And my question is, are we talking about it now? Or are we talking about it under new business?
Thank you, Don, and thank you for bringing up some things that many of us have been thinking about. I think for the school calendar, that is absolutely what we need to talk about. I'm wondering if Peter and Brad and Keith can maybe do a little brainstorming and, or, or prepare for next week. We won't put you on the spot right now, but prepare for next week. Maybe these are some of the things that you've already started to discuss. And the other thing in September was that the governor listed the marathon date as a state holiday, too. So that was another date. I think it's the 14th, if I'm not mistaken. So if you, if the administration would maybe give us an update on that next week, was surprised, we're going to recommend having a, I'm going to recommend having a meeting next week. Would love your initial thoughts on that. I, I don't want to throw that at you right now because it is something to think about. And then to
If you'd like the school calendar on next week's agenda.
Yes, yes, thank you. And then, yes, the question, I guess, is in terms of the fees, right? We only had sports fees listed or a memo about them. What about the other fees? When are we talking about that? Can you?
The plan was, the plan was to do the spring sports fees first and introduce the framework for decision making through that mechanism. And then the budget subcommittee was going to move on to the other, other fees and prepare a recommendation for the committee based on the decision tree that we're introducing in the packet later in the meeting.
All right. So let's, let's move on with the budget discussion. And I'm anticipating that we're going to have to have another discussion about fees next week, if that's what it sounds like. So who wants to start with the budget discussion?
Well, so in our most recent, well, actually it was last week in our budget subcommittee meeting, among other things, we discussed fees. And maybe I should back up a sec because like, what the heck are we talking about every single week in budgets? I know it's Brad and Keith's favorite meeting of the week. It's actually, it's actually a very good regroup. Usually what we do is we'll get an update from three points. The subcommittee will hear from Dr. Jackson and Keith Bude on, you know, what they know that's coming down from Desi, from the governor, from the superintendent's association. So we kind of get that feedback and how that may be impacting where we're, where we're headed financially. And then we'll get an update from the finance committee because again, similarly, coming from the state, et cetera, they'll have economic information. They also can share with us information about local, you know, tax, tax revenue, et cetera. And that's, that's critical because, you know, they're managing it day by day and it helps us understand where things are. Tina Heine has been extremely helpful in providing us with insights on where the other departments in town are at, especially with respect to their own contract negotiations. So we did get an update on that and they settled six different contracts this week and they all are at 0%. So that's, that was helpful contextual information. So that's how we start the meetings and then we go into sort of the brass tacks on our own budget issues. So more to the point, we discussed the topic of athletic fees because it's one of the first ones that came up. And the, the subcommittee was trying to think through, you know, a framework for how we evaluate the notion of what we do with fees and potential reimbursements because we have received requests across the board. And I want to thank Dr. Jackson because he took our unwieldy conversation and wrote this lovely memo, which I think will be turned into something eventually that the public can have. It's in your packet. And I mean, Brad, you wrote the memo reflecting our conversation if you want to go through it, but it's sort of a decision tree for evaluating services rendered, how much has been used, are there any savings and fees that can be reimbursed? So if you want to talk to that, Brad, I'm happy to let you do that because I'm running out of voice. Did he? Oh, he's, okay.
He might have left his computer for a minute. Athletic fees, that's fine. I guess I also want to hear what our communication plan is about these because it is now May 7th. I know school just closed officially to the end of the year, two weeks ago, but and, and I'm trying to be patient and others are trying to be patient, but I think,
Right.
What's going on? Where's my mind?
Right. So let me, so this, our, our vote in the subcommittee and recommendation to you is specific to athletic fees, but it, it's sort of a Pandora's box, right? It begs the question of, well, what about pre-K and kindergarten tuition? What about bus fees? What about other fees? So, so where we started was with the athletic fees. And, and let me sort of explain this framework to, you guys saw the memo, but to the public. So the question was for fee, for fees, for fees that were for services for the entire school year, where the service, the fee was paid for the service upfront and delivered, delivered in full prior to March 12th, when we shut down and to the fullest extent possible after that. Then Brad, I'm not explaining this well because I, I needed it in a chart. So I'm going to let you read it based on how you wrote it, if you want to do that, those three bullets. But basically it comes down to what we've delivered, what's been paid for and whether there's an ongoing service. So go ahead. Yo, you're not, you're muted, Brad.
Thank you. I'm awfully clamped here. I didn't realize we were skipping around on the agenda. So
I didn't mean to, we're doing budgets, so we started with fees.
So the budget subcommittee wanted to establish a framework by which decisions should be made around the, the possible refunding of fees. And essentially, the, the framework is around the ser- whether a service was delivered or not to the fullest extent possible. And if not, are there budget savings as a result of lower than expect, than expected service delivery? So the issue around sports fees, which is why we're introducing that one first, is, is a lot, is, is a lot clearer and easier to understand. The spring sports season never, we collected fees for the spring sports season for both, for both, from both middle school students and high school students. We, however, there was no spring sports at all. So the 100% of the fee was paid and 0% of the service was provided. In addition, we also did not incur an expense because we did not, we did not pay our coaches. We had, we had, we had held their pay and had not started paying them. We had actually hadn't held it. We hadn't started paying them because the season hadn't begun. So this is actually probably the easier of the decisions to make, which is we collected money for which no service was provided and we did not, and we did not spend any money to provide a partial service. So the, in, in, so the budget subcommittee felt that this was a budget neutral decision to return the fees to, to the parents that they paid and are so recommending. So both the, the budget subcommittee is recommending as the school committee, they voted unanimously to recommend that the school committee refuse, approve a refund of all sports, spring sports fees paid for the canceled spring 2020 spring season.
Okay, so, Joan, I'll grab you in one second. I just, so how will the refunds happen? And when, if we vote tonight in affirmative?
Keith, can you review the process of how we're going to process them?
So the treasurer has, has requested that we don't issue checks, say, from the student, student, actually from the student activity fund directly, that we're going through the, the traditional warrant process. So what would happen is we're going to bear a warrant, they're going to get entered into, into munis, into the, into the general ledger, and you guys will approve that refund. The high school right now is proposing to return the fees for all seniors and for underclassmen where they requested. We're planning on returning all middle school fees for athletics, period.
So what that means is if you are a junior parent and you're planning on your senior playing a fall sport, you could choose to not take a refund and use that money.
Just roll it.
Just roll it forward.
Yeah.
And, and that would help us, you know, reduce the number of checks we have to cut.
It also might be easier for parents because if you, if you know your kid's doing a sport, like I always, I always forget, I got to pay for that.
Some may, it may not. We're going to make it parent, make it, we're going to, so we're going to have to figure out a process. You know, Mr. Baker will be involved and Mr. Baker, Mr. Bude will be focusing on communicating with those parents and, and making sure that we know what their preferences are. The seniors, senior parents would all get a refund automatically. We're not going to, I don't think we're moving. Keith, we won't move it from kid to kid, will, student to student, will we? Yeah, it just doesn't make sense.
So with that
Presupposes the committee's vote.
Right. So let's presume the committee says, yes, we're returning spring sports. The treasurer prepares the warrant. We have a meeting next week. We approve the warrant. Then what happens? I really, I want, I want to be able to give people specific times and, and I think they're, this is strong, but I think they're owed that answer. And I'd like to, before I, before we vote on this, I want to make sure I understand the entire process. That's why I'm asking.
I guess the real question is, do we need, so we need to wait for the warrant before anything can be processed by the town? Or can there be, can some of the administrative work on this begin before the warrant if they, if we vote tonight?
The, 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 the process would be if you vote tonight, tomorrow, somebody's got, excuse me, too loud. That if, if you vote tonight, tomorrow, our, our bookkeeper will be starting the processing of, of entering the payments into munis. The, the warrant, you will vote on that warrant on the 14th. The selectman will vote on the 18th. The check will be out on the 19th, depending on paperwork.
But between now and then, could we find out from parents if they want to take their refund now or reapply it?
Right, but, I mean, we will reach out to that.
You will, you will reach out to parents with an email. You don't need to wait until two weeks from now or next week.
No, 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 no. As we know, somebody's getting feedback. We, we know that we're doing all the seniors, know that we're doing all the middle school students. The, the, the children that we don't know about are the underclassmen and we will reach out. Matt and I will figure out how to do that with baby Georgina's helper. We'll figure out some mechanism for doing that.
Wait this week or wait till the warrant? That's, I'm just
No, we're waiting. No, no, no. We can't wait for the warrant. We, we have to do, we want to do all of it. Happen before next Thursday.
Okay, that's what we want to know. Thank you.
The only thing, the only thing I do want to ask about is we do have a provision within the school committee policy regarding participation in events and whether we allow you to, if you, if you're maintaining a balance, a negative balance in your lunch account, I would like to propose that we don't refund money to people who owe us lunch money. You know, I offset, I mean, I don't, if, if they owe me 10 bucks, I'm not going to not return the 225. I'd return 215. So that's just one thing I'd like you to consider as well.
I would like to make sure that, that deficit associated with lunch money isn't a hardship thing. So if there's a way to determine that.
I, if they're on free and reduced, they're, they're on free and reduced. If they're not, I, we have no mechanism to determine that.
Well, we have a mechanism to determine if they're on free and reduced, but
Yes, right. And, and they wouldn't have, if they're on free, they, they would have earned, they, they shouldn't have a balance from lunch. So.
And also we have to remember, I think that the committee's already voted to authorize the chair to sign warrants. We don't have to wait for a meeting for a warrant to be signed any longer.
Oh, super.
Okay. So with that being said, are there any questions about the sports refund? John, sorry, do you have questions?
Yes, I do have a question. So I just want to confirm, belt and suspenders, that we do not have any contractual obligations to coaches for the spring. There's no contractual obligation. Okay, that's all I want to know.
It's, it's very similar to when we have, sometimes we set up to have a freshman team or a third team and we don't have enough students trying out. And when we don't have the third team or the freshman team, we don't have a coach. We don't pay a coach, so.
Okay.
In ordinary years, the spring season would be pretty much over by now. So so they, they are well aware they're not getting paid.
With that being said, is there a motion to approve the recommendation as presented by the budget subcommittee to refund spring 2020 sports fees?
Oh, seconded by Ann Louise.
By Andy, seconded by Ann Louise, roll call vote, Ms. Handschad?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Stevnic?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Ms. Schamansky?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey?
Yes.
Okay. Can we talk a little bit about other like-fees, meaning events and activities that did not occur this spring? So, I think there was a semi-formal. I'm not even talking about the senior events yet because I think that's a different, in its own bucket. But I'm aware there was a semi-formal that did not happen. Can we actually get an update on Nature's Classroom? Were there any other?
Nature's Classroom has been, the warrant has been signed. And Keith, what was the date that that check, the checks were going out for Nature's Classroom?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but it was.
It's at Town Hall. The checks are being generated by Town Hall now.
It may have came out last, it may have actually come out yesterday.
We discussed that at our last meeting, actually, Nature's Classroom, because that was.
Can we have some communication to the parents before those checks go out? That just something either from Mr. Jordan or Keith saying, I just think we need to communicate and say the checks are coming and you should expect them in the next week or so? Or whatever you think the timing is on that.
And what about the freshman, my daughter's the treasurer of the freshman class, and she has been inundated with questions about refunds on the semi-formal that were held, that are held by the sophomore class. So, Keith, do you know anything about? How can we find out?
The student activities are, I'd have to reach out to Nicole and maybe Georgina to find out what their plan is for that. Student activities kind of operate independently, I'll say. Really about student governance and student control. So, they may have determined a plan with the students already, I just don't know.
No, they haven't.
Okay, so, we'll have to move them along in that way then.
Yeah, I don't like to leave that open-ended. And I'm certainly not in the business of giving out agenda items or stuff. But I, can we please come up with some communication about that? I think that's important. People are asking about it rightfully so. And some people are in their own personal financial crisis.
They need their money. I think the issue with the freshman sophomore semi-formal is that they were talking about maybe having it in the fall. So, I don't think it's a foregone conclusion that they're returning the money. I just wanted to know where we were in the discussion because it doesn't seem like the students are getting a lot of traction with getting answers.
I can provide an answer. The semi-formal was pointing on rolling money to next year. The ninth grade payments will go to the semi for next year, and 10th grade payments will go towards the prom. And we'll send out an email early next week.
That's great, thank you so much.
So, to the, you know, I think if we could get a collective understanding around this framework for evaluating fee reimbursements, that would be helpful because it would go a lot faster to determining what we're doing with other fees that we've received inquiries on. So, pre-K tuition and bus fees. So, that, do you wanna go over this now? I mean, we can come back to you with a recommendation specifically on that after we meet on Wednesday. But is our next school committee meeting next week, Stacy?
The recommendation for me is that we meet next week, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, I mean, certainly we can give you numbers by them. But if, from sort of a more of a policy standpoint, I don't mean to say policy, policy, but.
Understood.
You know what I meant, because I'm not being terribly articulated at this very moment.
10 o'clock.
Yeah, sorry. So, I guess, let's just start with like bus fees by way of examples. So, you know, you pay your bus fee in the beginning of the year, and services have been rendered for three quarters of the year. And then we cut short on March 12th, and we're not continuing to run buses. So, there's no more services being delivered. But on the flip side, we are actually saving a bit of money on gas. So, this was a different scenario because you pay upfront for this, right? And we delivered like two-thirds or the majority of the year, but now we're not. So, the question, sort of, the subcommittee was grappling with is, do we refund the portion of the year that we haven't delivered services? Or do we somehow mitigate that because there is a cost? We still are in the bus contract. That's a key thing, like, just like the teachers. We pay upfront for that contract for the year. The contract didn't go away, it's a contract. So, we still have that cost to the district. And that's essential because we're gonna need buses next year. We can't just be in breach of contract. Having said that, we did save on fuel. So, there is, you know, a savings on fuel that's, I would say, half the cost of what it's still costing us to retain the buses through the end of the year. So, one scenario is, we divide the savings up and provide that as a reimbursement to parents. Another scenario is, we eat cost, pull more money out of our little treasury and reimburse the remainder of the bus fees. So, that's kind of where we were at. The subcommittee felt that the way to handle this, and that was sort of the other part of this framework, is that because the district is faced with that cost, and we have to eat that cost simply to deliver buses from September through June, that we can't reimburse the full bus fee, but we were comfortable and happy to reimburse what savings we were able to accrue through unused gas to the community, or to parents. So, that's where we came out on that.
And will we have more numbers next week?
Keith has the numbers on it. Yeah, it's not in this tonight, we can give you numbers. But do you have the numbers, Keith, handy, or not so much?
Can I ask a question?
You're on mute.
Can I ask a question first about that?
Yeah, now you're on mute.
Oh, it's getting late. Okay, so, my question is, so like, it seems more, I guess, clearer to me with the sports fee, the athletics fees, because I don't know a percentage of the fee actually pays for the coaching, et cetera. Maybe it's a one-to-one, I don't know. Like, maybe it's a direct revolving account. But with the, it isn't, right, Keith? So, the other question is, the same goes for the bus fees too? Like, the bus fee doesn't pay for the totality of the transportation costs? So, I'm just kind of struggling with what portion, you know, since we already have a contract and all those things, you know, I don't know what portion we return or can return, I don't know.
Why don't you give the committee the numbers, Keith? I think that would be helpful because that shed some light on it for the subcommittee.
Okay, I'd love to share my screen, but I'm on the wrong machines here. So, the, we were out of, we've been out of session for 62 days, so just over a third of the year. We have 970 people who have taken out a bus fee. The total cost between the people who paid the full bus fee and then the people who paid the additional 100 for having multi-stops, totaled $80,910 for that 62-day period. So, that's the fees that we raised through that period. If you talk about the savings that we incurred, I negotiate a rate reduction from our bus contractor based on the fact that he's not having wear and tear on his buses. I mean, and having, you know, these little maintenance pieces that he'd have to do. So, the amount of savings on that add up to about $19,500. In addition to that, my estimated fuel savings would be another $37,900. I mean, sorry, total, total between the two, I'm sorry. The total between the savings from the contract and the total from the fuel totals $37,846. So, the question, the two questions, and then there's a second question. The two questions are, is which is more, do you feel, which would you prefer to do? And then, if you chose the savings one, are we basing it the savings over the total number of riders? Or across just the riders who paid a fee? To address Cynthia's point of that, you know, that it doesn't, that the fee doesn't pay for the entire program, so.
Yeah, do you have the cost? Do you have the total cost?
The total cost of transportation?
So, you've talked about what we have to pay the bus company, like what that number represents, that 89, 910. You've talked about the credit, if you will, of 37, 9. But what do we, do we know what the cost is for those 62 days? Does that include, sorry, does that include vacation time too? Because we would have not had busing during vacation.
62 school days we missed.
Yeah, so are you looking for prorated per diem rate on the contract? Like, if you have $100,000?
No, I'm just curious to Cynthia's very good point. This is the cost, this is what we charge, and this is what we're being credited. So, the question is, not just what we're being charged from the bus company minus the credit, the cost.
It is the per diem cost that she's asking for, Keith. If you took your contract and came up with a per diem day rate, what would it be?
No, give me, I don't need a per diem rate, I want the big number.
Hang on, hang on, it's the per diem day rate times the.
I can articulate my questions, thank you.
But that's not, it's not what he's hearing, though.
And he and I can work that out. Are you unclear on what the question is, Keith?
No.
Okay. Cynthia, as I just said, Cynthia very aptly pointed out that there is a cost to transportation.
Yes.
And there are the fees that we charge.
Yeah.
My question is, if you were looking at the 62 days, and you have given us the fees, the contractual amount that we owe homes, can you tell me the cost?
Okay, so, I'd have to, I'd have to pull the contract, which is in my office. I don't know the daily rate for those 62 days. And I would, I mean, the fuel for those 62 days would be the savings, so that's.
Right, I appreciate that, yeah, yeah. No, I just wanna know the overarching number for the 62 days of what is the district's cost?
Yeah, I'd have to, again, but the contract's in my office, I don't have it, you know, I don't.
Joan, are you trying to get to whether we're, if we're having savings, are you thinking maybe we should be reimbursing our own line item as opposed to reimbursing the fee payers?
I'm saying that we need all the data to make this decision.
Well, and that's why it's not on the agenda for tonight.
Very good point.
Maybe we should let the budget subcommittee do their work and prepare a recommendation for the school committee at their next meeting.
Yes, please make that, I'm gonna sound like a jerk, but please make that for next week, because.
That was the priority. That was, that was what the plan was because we had to come up with a framework for dealing with this stuff because it was complicated. So, we took the easiest ones first, we developed the framework. I was trying to give you an example of one and how it works with the framework without getting deep into the cost of it.
All right, but it's, let's keep moving with it, we need to.
Yes, that's what we're gonna do.
So, is there a motion to refund? Do we already do this? Because now I'm totally, we didn't, okay. Is there a motion to approve the spring sports fees? Oh, Keith?
You already did this.
That's what I, that's what I just asked, okay, so we're good. Okay. FY21 budget, is there an update?
I'm sorry, Stacy, what?
FY21 budget, where are we with our recommendations that need to be brought forth to town meetings?
Okay, well, there's two things on this I just wanted to address. I'm gonna address the simpler one first. You had asked on the capital side if we had a capital recommendation to discuss on Monday night. And unfortunately, we didn't have, we didn't know yesterday that we were having the meeting Monday night with the select board. So, that wasn't the priority discussion yesterday. So, we either go to the select board and simply review the request that we had on the table literally months ago, or we refine that request down. And I'm happy to do that and just let them know, like, here's what was on the table. We wanna hear your thoughts. But next Wednesday is when we can look to refine that recommendation. I think the highlight on that is that, you know, major projects like redoing Comedian probably aren't going to be there. But technology projects that would be required to support extended remote learning, if we go into that next year, we're gonna, we may need that. Those are the kind of things that I think we would wanna protect in the capital budget. And then finally, are there any question marks that would come in because of other scenarios next year? That gets back to the operating side. One of the things that I mentioned earlier, and I think I may have mentioned it in our last school committee meeting, is that this scenario planning has a direct impact on the budget scenarios. And I don't wanna go to town meeting with the best case. I wanna go with the worst case. The worst-case budget scenario, meaning we have to ask for the most, is a scenario that is probably some kind of funky hybrid school situation where we're creating school days or school weeks with half the population of students. And so, what are the implications for busing? What are the implications for sanitation? What are the implications for lunch? What are the implications for hand washing, et cetera? Like, all those things are the things that the administration is trying to work through. And quite honestly, I can't give you a timeline because I haven't got a timeline yet on when they are going to be able to get through that kind of detailed planning. And we may need to swag this a bit because there are probably gonna be more details than we can contemplate before we need to come up with a budget. The guidance we're given is that in all likelihood, the state and the town are gonna ask us for a 1/12 budget starting in July. And that 1/12 budget would be a 1/12 budget based on the prior fiscal year. So, it'll be 1/12 of that. So, that's probably where things would start if we don't have any more information than we have right now. Brad or Keith, you wanna add to that?
So, the select board, I wasn't able to hear the whole conversation. They were talking about capital requests last week. They are anxious for the school committee to chat with them. There was discussion about changing the policy. But they didn't have, because Tina brought up that, you know, the language could probably change on the capital policy. And so, you know, what was the, you know, I don't know what she shared with you on Wednesday. But Mark is pushing that we go. And so, I've pushed them off for a little bit now, but I feel like we've, we've gotta go.
I just had no idea that was coming up for this Monday. I mean, I think it's great, so, yeah, so that's great. I mean, like I said, we can go. I think frankly, the first agenda item with them should be an adjustment to that policy because it might set the stage for the subsequent conversation around capital. So, I think if we could, if we could bring that to the table, get it to them in advance, which that's easy enough to do, that would be great. And then, we'll just have to have a little bit more open-ended conversation with them Monday night because at this point, we're not prepared to give them a full or final recommendation on capital.
They actually voted something on Monday night to not change the policy.
Well.
I'm just, it's just an FYI, that's all.
I guess we would ask them to revisit that then.
And then what about, um, no, Ren, that's okay. So do you have the language, Ann-Louise, for what you wanted to recommend for changing the capital policy?
I'm gonna recreate it. I have searched high and low my files. Everybody who had a copy of it doesn't seem to have a copy of it from last year. They were like two substantive changes, but not major. And I know if I read it again, I'll immediately look at it and go fix it. So I will get you a red line on that tomorrow.
And any other information you want to share that you've been hearing from the FinCom? Anybody, Lisa, Andy?
You guys have anything? Lisa, you had a long talk with Ken, that was great.
Yeah, I mean, there's uncertainty, things are bleak, you know, that's, there's no, I mean, you know, this, I think, we've already, we've already talked about some of the specifics tonight, I think. This has been such a long meeting, I can't even remember what we've already shared at this point. But, um, yeah.
You did, you did.
We expect it to be, you know, at this point, it's looking worse than the recession of '08 and '09. And nobody knows, and we just have to plan the best we can with the limited information that we have.
Part of our conversation also kind of circled back to the fact that right now, we're planning on having that town meeting in June. But even that's really up in the air in terms of question about, is it gonna happen then? Is it going to look the way that we would expect it to look? So in terms of uncertainty, uncertainty is not just about the money, it's about the whole process. Is it gonna be 1/12th? Is it gonna be quarterly? Is it, I mean, there's all sorts of moving parts that we don't have answers to right now. So some of it, we talk about is, I will put a, this come back next week and talk about it again and see if anything's changed. But until we get a little bit closer and the state moves a little further along with their budgeting, I don't know how much information we're gonna have.
It's that uncertainty in the legislative process that led Tina to suggest that, and Ken, that in all likelihood, that's why we would be dealing with a 1/12 budget in July. So, um, is what it is.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions for the Budget Subcommittee? Joan?
Um, is there, so in a memo in mid-April that we got from the FinCom, there, there was an expectation of an FY20 budget, excuse me, FY21, revised FY21 budget with a different guideline than the original. And I'm just curious, has that been prepared? Do we need to submit that to them? Is that just informational at this point? What's happening with that?
They know exactly where we're at. And frankly, they've been great about that. I mean, we can't, well, let me say this. The guideline was 0%, and that wasn't obviously where we were at as of, uh, March 12th. So we were closer to 2.72%. And there were a lot of things that that was dependent upon. I don't want to go too deep into this, but they understand that because of our collective bargaining situation, we weren't in a position to prepare a different budget. So, um, so I think they've been patient.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to new business. Brad, students are registered.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. And I wanted to present on behalf of Peter and myself our recommendation for election as our student, next student services director. I'd like to present the name of Kelly Camp. Kelly, as you know, is currently the Student Services Administrator at the Robert Adams Middle School. And we, both Peter and I feel she will serve the district well in this new role. You know that this has been a thorough search process. Peter and Ms. Bottomley co-chaired a screening committee, which also included Ms. Listevnik and Ms. Koshin. And they recommended three finalists for public consideration. We did interview, I did interview them all over Zoom. And they all attended virtual site meetings where each of you were actually in attendance. I think I saw all of you there. And I received, I solicited and solicited feedback in the other two rooms, requests for feedback from staff and parents. And received a lot of feedback, probably 30 to 35 emails. And with, and each of the candidates did receive endorsements from at least several email, in at least several emails. I, we did some extensive reference checking in addition to reaching out to the individuals that they named in their, in their, uh, in their resume and that they provided in their application. Luckily, Peter and I have a lot of connections and we're able to make connections independent of that to, to talk to other trusted colleagues who are familiar with each of their work history. Finally, we did, recognizing the unusual circumstances in which we find ourselves, we did consult with the four building principals, who also offered a strong recommendation in support of Ms. Camp, which I attached to the memo. So if, after a great deal of consideration, Peter and I are jointly recommending Kelly Camp as the next Student Services Director. I did want to address one issue that there, in hires such as this, there are inevitably opportunities to, one of the biggest issues that I face frankly is whether or not it's, it's appropriate and it's time to seek an external candidate. And whether an external or an internal candidate has advantages or disadvantages. For example, when we were hiring Ms. Wiens replacement of Placentino, I felt that an external candidate made the most sense there. Given the fact that we are facing unprecedented uncertainty that we've been spending the past couple hours talking about, about how the coronavirus pandemic is gonna impact the 2021 school year, I, I really felt it was important to, that I felt that Ms. Camp will be in the best position to hit the ground running immediately and seamlessly and integrate herself into our senior admin team that is working right now on these plans. So with that, with confidence, Peter and I both recommend that the Holliston School Committee elect Ms. Kelly Camp, Director of Student Services, effective July 1st, 2020.
Are there any questions from the committee? Joan?
Brad, I'm curious, did you receive, I have two questions. Did the CPAC parents have their own separate interview? Or were they in the parent one that all the school committee members were in?
They were, there was one parent interview and they, they were the, my, my lead of the room, they were the predominant parents in that room, other than school committee members.
Joan, they were also represented on the screening committee. Off the top of my head, there are at least two parents on the screening committee who are also active CPAC members.
Uh, that's, that's good information. And did you have a consensus among those parents about their opinions? You don't have to say what that consensus was. I'm just asking about the feedback you received from them.
Yes, there was consensus in their feedback.
Thank you.
And that sub, in that, in that group, the CPAC committee had consensus in their feedback.
I think it's, um, it's, it's our circumstance of Zoom and our virtual world that, that the parent and the school committee were all one. And I know it's been that way in the past, but it feels like more diluted when you're in a room i- in the library and meeting people. I think that parents might have been reticent to speak up more in those interviews because the seven school committee members were there. And as anybody with eyes and ears can tell, we're all pretty outspoken and have strong opinions. And I, I, I fear that their voice may have gotten lost a little, that's all.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the Student Services Director?
Can I just say something really quick before we do that?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, thanks to everybody who participated in the screening committee. It was a really, that's the first screening committee that I've been part of. It was a really interesting process, especially over Zoom. And I thought that there was a lot of thought put into the questions. And it was a really interesting collaborative effort between, you know, the parents, the school committee members, the administrators, everyone that was there. And I think we had three really strong finalists. And I think that, uh, you know, it was a really, it was nice to see that in the middle of a pandemic, we can still have a collaborative, thoughtful process. And I also just want, for me, and I'm sure Cynthia probably could speak to this too, I just want to say thank you to all the parents. I haven't responded to everyone yet, but I have to most, I think, now, thanks to parents and other folks in the community who reached out and expressed an opinion about this. That's all.
Is there a motion to approve the Student Services Director appointment as presented by Dr. Jackson tonight?
I'm moved. Seconded by Cynthia.
Moved by Ann-Louise, seconded by Cynthia, vote called up, Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
No.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? No. That is not, um, how am I gonna say this? It is an in-favor vote, so congratulations, Ms. Camp, to your appointment.
Thank you.
Keith, do you want to talk about school choice seats?
No, muted, I know muted, okay, I got it. I get the floor at 10:24, great. We've completed our school choice application period, our initial one. The recommendation this year is littered with concerns just because in this new world that we're in, whether any kids come here, whether I, I, you know, I'm treating it like normal, but I just can't promise what we're gonna get. We had 52 requests this year, which is one less than last year. So it seems like we've hit our, a fairly consistent number for us on expectations. We do have 10 graduates this year, with four students moving from kindergarten to first grade. So if you think of a student as an FTE, which is the way the state treats them, a kindergarten student gets credit for a half an FTE, so we have 10 graduating, so we lose those 10. But the four going from half-day K, which is all that's, we technically provide for free, not technically provide for you, that's all we provide for free. But going from half-day K to full-day first grade, that adds two seats back in. So we have a net negative eight coming into this year, besides any other children who may attrit out. So my recommendation is to add five full-day kindergarten seats, three French immersion seats, two first-grade seats, four second-grade seats, six third-grade seats, three fourth-grade seats, five high school seats. This would add 25 students or 21 FTEs. We will not fill all these, I can't tell you that. I just, I, I know that our normal fill rates in the 50 to 60% range for the seats we offered, a lot of parents do shop. So what the number's gonna be this year, I can't tell you. I've included a number of reports for you, for your ratification. The first is a school, a school choice history report. The second is a spreadsheet showing the rationale for participating in school choice. And the last is a projected class size report. So as I go down to what's in your packet, the school choice history report, you'll, you'll see that we're, you know, currently we're at 98. We haven't been under 100 since, what, 2006? So our school choice population is, is going down. And the money's going with it, as you can see in the attached graph, Cynthia. And so, a- again, they're gonna mimic each other somewhat. The, the school choice, we get $5,000 per student, plus a special ed increment from dollar one. It's not like Circuit Breaker, where you have to get four times above foundation. It's from dollar one. So if a child's getting 22 seconds of speech and language services once a year, we'll get to charge for that 22 seconds of speech and language time. So depending on the number of special needs students that come here, that's where the, the two charts can be, or the two lines can be a little bit off. The next chart is an FTE by home district. It's just interesting sometimes to see where the students are coming from. We have, our, our biggest community is Milford with 32, Milis is 15, Medway 10. The, the next one is actually, I always find more interesting, which is tuition by home district, which shows Milford's, you know, the town of Milford writes a check to Holliston basically for $243,000 this year. So it's, it's, it's okay, that's like good money. The, the next one showing the class size, the next report showing class size without school choice, what I do here is I basically back out all the school choice revenue and all the school choice students. I recalculate what the average class size would be first, and then take away the teachers that we pay for with our school choice dollars. So you can see that in grades K through 8, every place we'd increase class size, if I had to pull those teachers out, I have to pull out 12 teachers based on an average of about $56,000 for our bottom end teacher, our bottom price on teacher. The high school actually, for the first time, because again, as school choice enrollment goes down, there's less to offset with, our class size actually would go up by a tenth of a student per classroom. So the increase is slight, I mean, very slight, but there's still an increase. I just want to reflect that in, in my report. Then the, it's the school choice impact on class size. You can see that in, in grades 1, 4, and 5, we have an, an increase of, an increase of, or we're above, there are guidelines. It's the reason why we're trying, we try to limit in those places, that the, the students in grade 1, one is a sibling and one is a, and again, we just felt we had room for one more there, because some of my increases of projections, we're not sure is gonna hit. I, I, when I project class sizes, I base it on a five-year, a five-year enrollment, Holliston student enrollment projection. So we think there's a little room there. So again, my, my recommendation, the, what I'd like to have a motion for, or my recommendation is to have five kindergarten, full-day kindergarten, three full-day French immersion, two firsts, four seconds, six in third, and five in ninth grade. Any questions?
Pretty graphs, Keith, thank you.
That was all for you, Cynthia.
And Keith, my guess is that we might need to, will we have to revisit this? No, never mind, it's not relevant, never mind.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions from the committee? Is there a motion to approve the school choice seat as presented by Mr. Boudet?
Moved by Cynthia.
Seconded by Lisa.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Lisa, vote called up, Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next is, uh, in your packet, there is a memo on returning. When we, when we've used up all the capital money that we, you know, for a project, we return the balances. There are four projects that we've exhausted our efforts on, for their, to the purpose of the efforts. So I, I would make a recommendation to return the following four projects. Maintenance vehicle, we got a better, well, not a better price. Maintenance vehicle, we got a better, well, not a better price, $487. Maintenance vehicle, we underspent by $487. The cleaning machine, we actually did get a better price when we went out to bid than we had projected. Returning $9,781.92 there. Chromebooks, there was $165 left in an account. And the wheelchair bus and van, this is actually something Brad and I talked about. With COVID, we, we may be, or with unemployment, I shouldn't say COVID, with unemployment rates being high, we may be able to find a driver. It's worked fine this year with, with having homes do it. It's the, the incremental cost hasn't been bad. I, I just, I'm, I'm torn on it, in all honesty, whether or not to go that. The one time that a van broke down this year, they had a backup van ready to go or a backup vehicle ready to go. So it was simpler than when, when, when we used to be back when it was our problem. And when their driver got sick one day this year, they had to provide a sub. So for, for the gray hair, that seems to be showing because of my beard. For the gray hair that I get, it's, you know, for some of these things, having the, having our large bus contractor do it worked out very well this year. If we, if we were to go back, we would have to use the capital money. But I'm confident, I don't necessarily want to go back next year or so. But, so that's my recommendation to return, to close out those four capital projects and return $65,434.72 to the town. Any questions?
Yeah. Any questions? No? All right. Is there a motion to return? Keith, what's the number again? $65,000?
Moved by Don?
Seconded by Andy.
Moved by Don, seconded by Andy, roll call vote, Ms. Hanstead? She said yes, she can't.
Thumbs up?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes. Thank you. I need to report out some warrants that I have signed. The first one is a school bill warrant in the amount of $400,098.09. The second is a cafeteria bill in the amount of $2,679.91. And another school bill warrant in the amount of $49,317.09. Those have all been signed by yours truly. Okay. And, okay, so let's just remind ourselves we will have a meeting next Thursday, May 14th, uh, Don?
I think we need to do a motion on a, having a meeting next Thursday, right? Is that a question? Do we have to do a motion in order to have a meeting next Thursday? No? Okay.
Nope. So next Thursday, March 14th, at 7:00 PM, same Zoom station. What?
May 14th.
May, what did I say?
March.
Oh, God. No, we don't want it to be March 14th again.
Is it, do we need executive session with that meeting, Stacy?
Possibly.
Okay.
Maybe.
Just wondering.
Okay. So we want, sorry, I'm looking for my notes. So we want a discussion on the recommendations for the returning of fees. And a discussion on possible changes to the 2020, 2021 school calendar. A general COVID-19 update. And we can probably give an update in terms of our discussion with the Select Board on Monday night.
And also, I mean, I think we need to stay on top of school start times, right? The implementation process for getting ready for that?
Yeah. Yeah. No, yeah, right. It's sort of part of the big planning. Any, anything else? Nope. Okay, we are going to resume our executive session. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn our public session. And then Keith, do we log off and go back into the, no, we stay here?
Just stay here for a second.
Okay.
And so I get HCAT off.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from public session. And we will not be returning.
Moved by John?
Seconded by Cynthia.
Moved by John, seconded by Cynthia, roll call vote, Ms. Hanstead?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? It is 10:36. We are adjourning. Good night, all. Stay well.